You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire, and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixel and Mendo Alerts on our website, mendoready.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit mendoready.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had...
I would like to call the June 25th, 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting to order and invite the clerk to conduct roll call.
Supervisor McGordy?
Here.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Here.
Supervisor Hachak?
Here.
Supervisor Drody?
Here.
Supervisor Williams?
Here.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the republic, the citizens.
Okay, at this time, we are going to move on to item number two, public expression. Public expression is the portion of the agenda that allows the public to speak for two to three minutes on any item of interest so long as that it is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. While members of the public are welcome to address the board, under the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from engaging in deliberation or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. Any member of the public is welcome to add an... or any member of the board is welcome to add an agenda item to a future calendar by working with the chair and the clerk of the board. If you wish to provide comment on items of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time.
Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board. Steve Dunnecliff, Deputy CEO. Walked in a moment late, so I'm hoping that this is public expression.
It is, yeah.
Perfect. And I'm here today just to introduce Angela Godwin, the county's new ag commissioner, who, of course, your board has met before, but wanted to give her just an opportunity in her second day physically with Mendocino County to say hello.
Okay.
Good morning, as seen members of the Mendocino... Let's make this for a little short person here. Board of Supervisors, as he said, my name's Angela Godwin. It's my second day, and it's a great honor to be here as the newly appointed ag commissioner, sealer of weights and measures. I am deeply grateful for this opportunity to serve the county in this important role. And I come to this position, and I know you know, we've talked, but with a strong background in agriculture with a passion for sustainability, equity in the marketplace, and a dedication to supporting our local farmers, ranchers, agriculture, and other businesses. I appreciate, I'm just beginning to learn how beautiful this county is, and I appreciate the rich history it has of agriculture. And I'm committed to continuing that and expanding upon programs and traditions we have here as an example of agricultural excellence. I promise to uphold the highest standards of integrity, transparency, and efficiency in all aspects of my duties. So, and I want to work to promote the health and vitality of the industry and the health of the public and the safety of the environment. I look forward to collaborating with all of you as well as our local stakeholders and community meeting members to address the challenges and opportunities that we have. I've had people already reaching out to me. It's just delightful. So, I just thank you for your trust and support in this opportunity. And I know you have a lot of work today to do, but I'm excited to be here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela, and this is public expression. And so in the future, would encourage you to work through the executive office to come to item 4A with any kind of updates or information you want to share, and of course, to use the CEO report for that information. Supervisor McGordy, did you have a brief comment?
Very brief. Welcome aboard, Commissioner Godwin. We're really looking forward to working with you. It's great to see our offices fully staffed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'm sure that every member of the board appreciates that you're here, and we look forward to working with you.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mendocino Board of Supervisors. My name is Leona Costa, and I recently secured a full-time job here in the city of Ukiah and have been traveling here five days a week. But I am also a landowner in the outskirts of Mendocino for a 17-acre parcel of land that we hope to develop into a cannabis business. And one of, we have secured a lease with the tenant, and they have signed a lease, and they keep saying that they're waiting for the SEQA report. Well, the SEQA is in a draft report right now, and I saw that there's two paths forward. The path, one path forward is only for annual license holders to retain their licenses. Well, for nurseries, which is what my client submitted a permit for, there's only four annual licenses for nurseries about, and there's maybe 50 permitted nurseries in the county. So, less than 10% of the cannabis nurseries have actual annual licenses. And the second alternative is to say that the provisional license holders can't grow in this map that doesn't really affect my county, my parcel of property. But there isn't a path forward for my client, for my tenant, with the SEQA report because there's nothing in the SEQA report for people that have licenses where they've paid the county fee and they've paid the state fee. And I didn't know if the Board of Supervisors knew that. And I just found that out as a landowner. And so it's very concerning for me that I'm not going to be able to have a tenant that can help me pay my property taxes. And then I look and I see that nurseries are only $34 million worth of the cannabis sales for the entire estate. And I saw in Calaveras County, there was recently an illegal cannabis nursery, and they had $10 million worth of loans. And I really just think that legal businesses that operate should have a path forward and that we shouldn't just be having to pay fees for licenses that don't exist. Thank you.
Thank you. And we would encourage you to reach out to the Cannabis Department to be able to get your questions and concerns answered.
Good morning, Mark Donigan, self-healing practitioner and educator, ordained minister, AKA Goldilocks. Gratitude and appreciation always. What is county business exactly? Every, hopefully, everything I'm going to say and everybody I'm going to mention today is county business in one way or another. I'm going to try to throw out a lot of people because it was a good week. But there's, we're having a lot of problems with, in tomorrow's Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting, Board meeting in Mendocino, 1 to 3. And I'm throwing this out because there's a lot of discussion about the homeless. And there's, these things are all tied together. The lady before me, today's agenda in general, I believe is going to take care of most of that. So, my particulars are, again, Chief Crook of Ukiah PD was instrumental in making my week good. And Bernie Norvell threw in just the absolute fix of what I was looking for. It's going to take a while, just like with everybody else. But when I looked at what's going on and what I'm having to do with them and other people, the person that deserves the most gratitude and appreciation in this county in my world is my apartment manager of Ukiah Senior. I call it Hotel California. Her name's Amy England, and she works for Buckingham Property Management. We've had quite a few issues. And if you look at the police calls there, including this morning, that's well-founded. And working with the chief and with Bernie, I think we're going to take care of a lot of those problems. And they have been taken care of well through Amy and Buckingham. They, you know, they do things properly. We document. And so when they go to court, they take care of things. So, that wraps around to the farmer's market. We wouldn't have that atmosphere and that ability to be free if it wasn't for all of us working together to make things better in all of these places. And once again, the complainers are always the loudest. So, I'm wanting to be here to say, I appreciate you all working together. I appreciate today's agenda. It's got everything I was looking for for a year on it, and I hope it's all approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hachak, did you? Oh, sorry, I thought I saw your pin up. Go ahead and please come forward. This is for items that are not on the agenda.
Yeah, I understand. I'm Edie Lerman, and I've spoken with a lot of you individually. I just wanted an opportunity to come forward and talk a little bit about cannabis and what's happening in the county, not specific to any of the agenda items directly. One of the things that I heard you tell that other woman, Leona Held, is that she should talk to the Cannabis Department, which is great and good advice. I looked on, I'm pretty active on social media, and on June 10th, someone posted, "I've been trying to call the Mendocino Cannabis Department all morning at 707-234-6680. I keep getting their answering machine that tells me their office will be closed over the Christmas holiday." This was on June 10th. The communication with the Cannabis Department is really hard. This just happened in June. They're here, like, that's what you hear when you call the Cannabis Department, is that they're on Christmas holiday in June. Something's not right. It's not happening for my clients. Everyone is trying to get licensing. Nobody in Phase 3 has a license. There's no path towards licensing for Phase 3. If you read the SEQA, anyone who potentially is applying under Phase 3 isn't even really considered. So, I'm more than happy to talk with anyone that wants to talk about what's happening. But I know that in Mendocino County, when people come to me and they're seeking advice as to where to cultivate, I never would tell them Mendocino County. I mean, Lake County, right next door, you can have a two-acre cultivation. It's pretty seamless and a solid investment. Here in this county, I can't advise clients in good consciousness to invest in Mendocino County. And that's really sad. I am in part invested in Mendocino County. So, for me, it's really hard to sit back and just watch nothing happen. And I don't know what I can do to make it happen, but I'm more than open and happy to do that if there's anything that I can do. We, my law firm had sued over a Phase 1 license, and we resolved with the county, and that person agreed to do a Phase 3 license under the auspices that they would be getting a Phase 3 license sometime soon. They still don't have their license, and it's been a year. And Judge Nadell, at the time, was really pressuring the county to resolve or she's going to rule in our favor. And that's why the county resolved the way they did. And still, no license, no path towards licensing. People are just exiting and fleeing the county, and I don't know what else to say. It's really sad.
Thank you for those comments. I'm certain that staff will look into the voicemail. And just so that you know, the General Government Committee, which meets tomorrow, does hear several cannabis items. So, that's a great place to go ahead and engage with those conversations. Appreciate you coming forward today.
Yeah, I will be there.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, are there any members of the public online that wish to comment on items that are not on the agenda? This is a time for public expression. So, if there are members of the public on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature on the Zoom platform or press star nine on your phone. Seeing no hands being raised, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number three, the Consent Calendar. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established.
Okay, so for members of the board and the public, we are first going to go into item 3J, which is an air quality item. So, I will read that the Board of Supervisors will go into recess for item 3J and will convene as the Board of Directors for the Air Quality Management District. The Mendocino County Board of Supervisors does not receive any additional compensation or stipend for acting as the Board of the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District. Are there any board members that wish to comment on item 3J or any members of the public that wish to comment on item 3J? Not seeing any hands in the dais. I'm seeing no one come forward in the room, and I have no hands raised on Zoom, so I would just be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote by the button, item 3J.
A motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much for that. And the Directors will now recess as the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Before I move to public comment on the Consent Calendar, are there any members of the board that wish to pull an item? Supervisor Williams?
It doesn't need to be polled because I'm going to support it. But on item 3O, I've received significant questions from public and press. Is it possible at a future time to publish more information about how this debt grew so large? We're discharging about $9 million. One of the questions from the public is, will this be ongoing? Can we expect a forecast of similar in the years to come? And is there anything the county can do to mitigate it?
Okay, it looks like Acting Auditor, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Sarah Pierce is coming forward. If we could just answer that?
Yeah. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. CEO, Anto County Council, Scott. I'm Sarah Pierce, Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. So, the largest amount of the debt is related to the age of the accounts. And then the second largest is the write-off for the AB 199. And so AB 199 was passed in July of 2022. That requires us to no longer collect on fees. And so we're not allowed to. We have to actually write that off. As far, for the one that's related to the age, we also wanted to note that this is two years' worth of activity. We were not able to discharge any of them last year. And the average has been for 21, 22, we were writing off about $4 million. In 1819, we wrote off $7.5 million. And in 2020, we wrote off 4.2 million. As we continue to work through, since we're no longer collecting for the courts, as we continue to work through those items, there may be an additional write-off next year. But then going forward, it will be minimal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
I just wanted to pull item 3D, not to discuss very much, other than to say that Charlie Barra is a native son and contributed a lot to our community in many, many ways. There will be people here to comment later. And it'll be an honor for us to be able to cross the place very close to where he lived and spent most of his life, the New Highway 20 Bridge, named the Charlie Barra Memorial Bridge. And I encourage all of my fellow supervisors to support this. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any additional pins up from supervisors, so I'd like to call at this time for public comment on the Consent Calendar.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am Katrina Kesson, Executive Director of the Greater Ukiah Business and Tourism Alliance. Today, I am here to express my gratitude and support for the resolution to rename the Russian River Bridge to the Charlie Barra Memorial Bridge. Through my time at Barra of Mendocino, I was blessed to know Charlie, and we remained friends until his passing. He taught me many things from farming organically to the nuances of notes that wine presents. But most importantly, I value the stories he would share with me as we sat together, often with a glass of his favorite wine in hand. Charlie had a way of sharing his passion for his life's work with the vines, his adventures through the years, and he loved to talk about his beloved home, Mendocino County. He was a true visionary that was the embodiment of the American dream. Charlie was born in Calpella in 1926 to Antonio and Marie, who were first-generation Italian immigrants. By 1946, as a senior in high school, he began farming his first grapes. Charlie Barra believed that hard work, consistent dedication, and integrity were foundational to any success. There wasn't a day where he would shrink from a challenge or find ways to serve his community. He has a long list of lifetime accomplishments which create a beautiful legacy. Part of the legacy he leaves behind are pathways forged by his own service to others, such as his work that the Barra family continues today with the St. Mary's Foundation. Charlie Barra was a man of grit, drive, and courage. He dared to dream big and found strategies to make those dreams a reality. His humble and grounded manner made this great man approachable. He enjoyed a good conversation about the work he devoted his life to doing. He was always ready for a lively debate, which ultimately ended in a hug or a handshake. And he was the best person to have a heartfelt discussion with at the dinner table when there was something that needed to be figured out. Again, thank you for your resolution that honors one of our community's great legends and a pioneer in the grape industry. I am not alone in saying that Mr. Charlie Barra left a profound mark on many that he touched. Whenever I visit the winery, I feel his presence there. It is strong and inspiring, just like the magnificent beams that grace the winery itself. I cherish and admire his lasting impact that he had on others and myself. And of all these things he shared, created, and achieved were accompanied by his bright signature smile and his unmistakable chuckle. Cheers to Charlie and his lasting memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on items that are on the Consent Calendar?
Hi, Leona Costa commenting on 3AH, the approval of the Mendocino County Department Monthly Update for April. I believe that's the month that my tenant submitted their application. And I don't really, on the report, I don't see an exact listing that identifies which category my tenant's application is, but I'm thinking it's maybe the Phase 3 initial issuance, and that three of them were issued. But that actually doesn't allow my tenant to be able to start their business. It just allows them the ability to apply to the state. And again, they're still waiting for the SEQA report. So, I go look at the report a little further, and I see in Mendocino County that there are 22 annual licenses and 466 provisional licenses. And going back to one of the options for the SEQA report that every person is waiting for in Mendocino County, that one of the options is that we only allow people that currently have annual licenses to continue cultivating. So, if there's 466, 10% of 466 is 46. 5% of 466 is 23. Well, there's only 22 annual licenses. So, the SEQA report that everyone's waiting for basically is only, could potentially have the outcome that only 5% of the people that are currently cultivating can continue to cultivate in the county. And my tenant isn't one of those. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone come forward in the room for Consent Calendar. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak on the Consent Calendar, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone. And seeing none, I'm bringing it back to the board for a motion for approval of the remaining of the balance of the Consent Calendar. Supervisor Hachak?
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Vote by the button, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 4A, Discussion and Possible Action Including Acceptance of Informational Reports from the Assessor, Clerk, Recorder, Registrar of Voters, Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, District Attorney, Sheriff, or various county department heads or designees. Are there any members, elected officials, that like to come forward?
Good morning, all. Katrina Bartlam, A Assessor, County Clerk, Recorder, Registrar of Voters. June is our month to close our tax rolls. So, we are working feverishly to get as many appraisals done, complete, and on the tax rolls so it, so we can print it out, you know, actually give it to the auditor's office. Discoveries, with our GIS layer provided by our GS Coordinator, Lee Farr, this month, our techs reviewed 863 parcels. We sent out 133 discovery letters. We've received 20 responses back that were given to the appraisers. And we discovered 12 structures that weren't being assessed properly, mainly sheds, a converted living quarter space, and miscellaneous improvements, which is pools, porch, cover, et cetera, bringing an added assessed value for the last month of $290,000. And we're still working on that. One of our discoveries actually applied for an amnesty building permit after we discovered them. So, we thought that was pretty cool, that it's like it was backwards this time instead of the other way around. We have met with two new printers on the election side, two new printers that were working on prices and speaking to each of them about our requirements. Hopefully, we'll be able to make a decision within the next week or so on election printing. We've begun some trainings with our poll inspectors and judges. Last week, we had about 40 inspectors and judges attend our meetings in Point Arena, Fort Bragg, Willets, and Ukiah. And we'll have our normal trainings take place right before election time. But we wanted to get this started. We've revamped a lot of our training stuff, and we wanted them as our guinea pigs so we can make sure everything's correct. And we wanted to listen to their stories and oddities that helped that they're, that happened at their polling places. July 15th is our first day of candidate filing. Locally, in November of even-numbered years, our special districts and school districts come forward for those boards. So, I'm meeting tonight with MCOE, with any of their candidates, to answer questions with them. So, we're looking forward to our candidate filing. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Supervisor Hachak has a question.
So, with the discovery that you're talking about, you said there was 133, and that from that, there was $290,000 of assessed value?
From, well, from the time that we started doing our discoveries, which was back in September, you know, we send out letters monthly. We send, when we do the discoveries. And out of that, out of the total, this month alone, we had 20 returned. And then we discovered 12 structures, this time, this month only.
Okay. So, out of those 12, then it's maybe 20,000 per structure.
Yeah. We haven't discovered anything big yet.
No houses, nothing like that.
We, there was one house up in the Leightonville area that was about 1,100 square feet. But that assessed value that we have with that is included in that 290.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. I did see Director Krog. Good morning.
Good morning. Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. I have a brief update for you on some of the items that are currently underway at Planning and Building Services. We are in the process of revamping our front counter operations in our Ukiah office to move to a more station approach. So, having assigned staff to work on particular duties. So, that way, we're making sure that everything is being touched in any given day. And we think this will increase our efficiency and the customer experience as well. We are also in the process of transitioning to a fully digital permit process. As part of this, we're doing a small remodel to our front counter area. You're welcome to stop by and take a look at that. We're in the midst of it right now. And this will accommodate a new scanner, And this will accommodate a new scanner, which is going to be brought in, that will have the capacity to scan the large format plans that we often receive as part of building permits and discretionary permits submittals. So that will be purchased in the new fiscal year, and then we'll be able to start moving forward with more digital plan check processes. Last week, we were also able to implement the ability to now issue building permits fully digitally utilizing DocuSign, so this eliminates the need for any individual to come into our office to pick up the permit. So staff has been trained on how to utilize this process, and we look forward to working with the public on that going forward, eliminating a drive time, hopefully. And then finally, in order to increase transparency, as well as to provide just general guidance to the public, we have created a public-facing document defining building permit statuses. This will benefit both staff and the public, so really, there's no question of where your permit is at in the process, depending on what status it is in. This has been posted publicly on our website, and so available at the front counters as well. We continue to work on our digital workflows for all of our processes, both planning and building-related. We are making a lot of progress, but there still is a long way to go. So I just wanted to share some of those updates with you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I think Supervisor Jertie has a question. I have a follow-up.
So I'm just curious if you could explain a little more about what you mean by the reorganization of the office? I, I and many others have, over the years, visited Sunnyvale with their one-stop shop as kind of like a well-known office where they've arranged, my recollection is, they had it so you would go to one station to talk about, say, building permit, and then you'd go to another to talk maybe to the fire marshal or whatever. Is the reorganization you're talking about here in Ukiah similar to that, or is it different?
It's a little bit different. So we're, it doesn't necessarily include other agencies, other than Planning and Building Services staff, but we have it so you walk in, you go to the same person essentially every time. We call that position the triage position, and that person is really assessing who you need to speak with, what departments you need to speak with, and also looking at any permit submittal to see, is it complete? We have a planner of the day stationed up there as well to handle anything that comes in from the front counter, whether it's a business license, or to look at a site plan to ensure that that is accurate, and hopefully reducing the number of correction letters. We also are going to be having a building inspector of the day up there that's there to answer technical questions and possibly perform simple plan checks while they're sitting up there as well. Then we have as well someone who is fully dedicated to the issuance of permits, so they'll handle the entire issuance process if somebody comes into the office, and also likely the digital issuances. And then we also have those that are handling like resubmittals that may be coming into the office, as well as handling phone call traffic and the digital submittals that we may receive online, and also intake of permit applications. So with the scanning, we obviously need a staff member who's going to go through and do that scanning of it, so the intake individual will handle that. So it's just sort of separating out, so that way folks have, rather than each staff member trying to do it all, we have folks with a really clear set of, these are the expectations from them on any given day, and it allows us to sort of adjust our operations depending on the staff that we have available that day, maybe because of absences or vacation schedules, or we can plug somebody in to a different station, and they have a clear task list of exactly what they're working on that day.
Thank you for this update. I know that the board and the community has been interested in these topics, so I really appreciate you coming forward today, and would just encourage you to work with the executive office for a press release around especially the digitization of our permitting process. It's something that the public has been calling for, for quite a few number of years, and so I'm looking forward to that.
Excellent. Will do.
Thank you. Any other internal department heads that'd like to come forward? Acting auditor controller treasurer tax collector Sarah Pierce. Good morning.
Good morning, board. So I just wanted to give an update on the interest apportionment that was discussed during the May board meeting. So the county has historically been applying an accrual factor to the quarterly interest apportionments to those that have the funds within the county treasury. The initial analysis determined that the interest pool may have been overapportioned due to the calculations with this accrual. The county worked with subject matter experts to determine the validity of the initial analysis and impact this may have on the entities with funds invested in the county treasury pool. The conclusion is the county has been accounting for only a portion of the accrual each quarter, and not the entire accrual. So the consensus was the county needs to begin, including the discount accreted or premium amortized, or move to a cash basis accounting method. So pursuant to government code, we have to give the entities that hold money in our county treasury 30 days. So as of July, as of the first quarter of fiscal year 2425, we will be moving to a cash basis interest pool apportionment, so that will be for the quarter ending September 30th, 2024. So while it's been determined there's been no overapportionment of funds, the first quarter transaction, or transition to a cash basis methodology, the portion may be lower than anticipated due to needing to back out the last accrual. So I just wanted to let the board know, and I'm working with the entities that hold funds in the treasury to let them know this as well.
Thank you. Supervisor Jertie has a question?
So translate into plain English. Does this mean the county's giving more or less money to the school districts, et cetera, that have money in the county treasury?
It depends on the activity that has happened during the quarters, but typically, it looks like we've been apportioning a higher amount each quarter, but then it gets backed out the next quarter. So over time, it evens out, but if we were just to move to a cash basis, it will be more transparent and the understanding of what is actually included in. But overall, it evens out.
Okay, so you don't think it'll be a net effect of change? You think it's just simply a different process by which you figure it out?
It'll be a different process. The first quarter that we move to it will be lower because we'll have to, there is a transition, but there's been no true overapportionment.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other elected officials in the room that wish to come forward, or department head? Seeing none, I will move on to item 4B. Oh, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on the item 4A? Seeing none in the room, and seeing none on Zoom. Now I will move on to item 4B, which is a discussion and possible action including acceptance of presentation from CalFire Mendocino Unit Chief Brandon Gunn on CalFire's fire fuel reduction plans and projects intended for completion in Mendocino County prior to the 2024 wildfire season and beyond, and Chief Gunn is here, and I think Supervisor Hachak wanted to start the item off.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Really, I wanted to thank Chief Gunn for coming in to talk about what's happening with CalFire. There's a lot of activity going on, you know, we're at the start of the fire season, and already we've seen quite a few fires around, and so I appreciate Chief Gunn taking the time to come here this morning and to talk about, you know, what's been going on, and also what the plans are for greater collaboration between the county, the CalFire, and the other agencies, because we've seen a lot, we've seen a lot of activity, like, like the median strip prescribed burns that was going to happen, but because of some situations, I guess it's not now, but you can talk about that. But really, I just wanted to let you know that I think that the full board is here to, to support whatever work you need done, and however we can collaborate in a greater way, it would be, you know, just let us know.
Thank you.
All right? So thank you for coming in.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Mulhern, members of the board. Thanks for giving me the time to talk about some of the projects that are going on in Mendocino County. We have a lot of burning and fuel reduction projects in the county, and I'll briefly go over that here. Mendocino Unit is overseeing more than $10.5 million worth of wildfire prevention grants awarded in the county this year. The grants are spread out strategically throughout the county, including fuel reduction efforts around tribal communities, Greenfield Ranch, Brook Trails in Sherwood, Highway 101, Covelo, egress routes throughout the county, $1.8 million worth of roadside clearing throughout county roads, over $600,000 in collaboration with the Mendocino County Fire Safe Council in cooperative projects, and over $2 million worth of fuel reduction projects in the areas surrounding the Ukiah Valley. CalFire has also had many active forest health grants in Mendocino County totaling over $22.5 million over the past several years. Those projects are still ongoing. Vegetation management projects and vegetation treatment, treatment projects throughout the county include the West Hills of Ukiah, Shamrock Ranch, Hoplin Research Extension Center, Rushy Mountain, Bridges Ranch, Horse and Beaver Project, Covelo South, Capistran Ranch, Thompson Gulch, the Fire Fuels Mitigation Project. We have fuel reduction projects, including Hoplin Station Road, Yorkville Ranch Road, Highway 101, and median burn that you talked about. I'll touch on that a little bit later. Vista del Lago, Laughlin Peak, Mill Creek Road, Golden Rule, Elkhorn Road, and Nash Mill. I am honored to serve the people of Mendocino County as the Mendocino Unit Chief, and I'm committed to protecting lives and property. This will be completed through strong collaborative relationships, prevention, planning, and the implementation of cultural burning, fuel reduction projects, prescribed fire, and incident preparedness. Senate Bill 1101 recently outlined that California's landscapes evolved in conjunction with fire. It describes fire as an essential, as rain in this environment. California and its Mediterranean climate is one of the most naturally fire-prone landscapes on earth. I want to develop the grassroots culture of burning in Mendocino County, where everyone comes together for the safety of our communities. This will take the citizens, county, tribal, state, and federal cooperators all coming together to burn on our terms, with sufficient resources at scene and under the fuel and weather conditions of our choosing, to produce controlled low-intensity fire that is good for our environment. In closing, I want to thank you for your time, and that's the end of my report barring any questions.
Thank you. Questions from Hachak, Magordi, Jertie, so far?
Perfect.
All right. Well, one of the things with the prescribed burns, which, which is a great way to deal with the situations we're living in, is that you need people trained in it. And are you doing the prescribed burns with your staff, or are you training others? Are there other groups coming in to learn that technique too?
That's a great question. Thank you. We're doing controlled burns under our vegetation treatment program and our vegetation management program, specifically with CalFire, and we're bringing in local government fire departments throughout the county to train with us. We also train with the Mendocino County sheriffs on evacuations before the, the season. We also work with the Mendocino County Prescribed Burn Association to support their burns. We're working with landowners to support their burning if they want to burn on their own property and they have their own firing and holding forces. A good example of that is Stuart Beulah in the Leightonville area, very active in, you know, being a steward of, of his land and reintroducing fire back on that landscape. And if we review the project and feel that they have enough holding and, and firing capacity, we will come and ensure that that fire stays on that land and, and that we support them in the best way that we can. So, long story short, I, I want to create that, that culture of burning to where, you know, if BLM wants to burn the Cow Mountain area or any area surrounding our communities, I will devote every resource I can, as long as they're not tied up in a fire on butte or anything like that. I want to support local landowners. We've supported tribes in the county in burning, like, like the recent Hoplin Band of Pomo Indians, they, they burned, did a cultural burn on their property. We're supporting that. So, in, in short, we're trying to bring everybody together and burn together under the right conditions for the right reason.
Yeah, and I know that there's some, some efforts, like especially, I've heard in Lake County that they're doing a lot of trainings of people. And so is that going on in Mendocino County?
Absolutely. So every one of our prescribed burns, we, we treat as a training opportunity. We're, we're training strike team leaders, divisions, branches, firefighters maybe that are just hired this year that have never fought a fire before. The first fire that they're seeing is under a controlled environment where we're lighting it under lower intensity conditions, rather than, you know, going to butte this morning and fighting fire over there. So we definitely treat that as a training opportunity, and then anytime we interact with, say, the Prescribed Burn Association or a rancher that's maybe burning their property, we're always there to, to give advice on safety, controlling that fire, firing under the right conditions, and ensuring that we do the best thing possible with this great tool that we have, and we don't lose any fires.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Magordi Jertie Williams?
Thanks for coming in today, Chief Gunn, and sharing with us all the thoughts and lots of activity that's going on. Last year, following the, the burn in Hoplin, there was some concern by grape growers, and I met with a group of, of CalFire people, including Chief Kendall at that time, and I, I just wondered if we're following through, trying to get the, the burns kind of in the grape-growing areas first, before the grapes become very mature to avoid any possibility of smoke taint?
Yes, we, we, I was at that meeting as well, with you. And that was a very good meeting, and we talked about weighing the, the, we talked about weighing, right, public safety versus, you know, private benefit. We, we talked about that, you know, the populated areas in Mendocino County are normally where you have vineyards, right? If it's around Anderson Valley or the Ukiah Valley or Redwood Valley, you're going to have vineyards and you're going to have population bases. So I want to try to focus my efforts of fuel reduction and prescribed fire around our communities, right? And sometimes, you know, if you have vineyards in an area and you have a prescribed fire project in the area that's being conducted for public safety, that's where, you know, the, the two different competing interests might rub elbows, but we've had good collaborative meetings, we've had good relationships, and we've, you know, committed to a partnership to where, before I do a burn or my staff does a burn, or we're supporting in a burn, that we notify the Mendocino County wine growers, and we notify the Farm Bureau to ensure that, you know, there, there aren't any crops on the vine that we're going to disturb. And, you know, with, with the, the thought of eventually, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, maybe not five years down the road, but eventually, we're going to have to do a, a project that, you know, might surround the, the foothills of Ukiah for public safety, that, that might be, you know, we've been trying to do it for, you know, eight years, and the CEQA runs out in 10 years, and that's the only time to do it, and it's three miles away from a vineyard, and, you know, the, the risk is worth the gain, you know, you're going to gain public benefit and public safety from it, and, you know, there might be a, a possible case. The, the instance you mentioned, right, was right across the fence line from Hoplin Research Extension Center and from a, a vineyard, and, you know, after the burn, it was thought that the grapes were tainted, that they had smoke taint, you know, and then we found out afterward that there was absolutely no impact to the grapes, which is awesome. And we're also partnering with the Hoplin Research Extension Center on trying to move forward a project of exactly the science behind smoke taint. You know, how long does it take for a, a fire to burn to actually cause smoke taint? What does the smoke density need to look like? What does the duration need to look like? So I think that's very exciting research for California, because as we start to reintroduce fire, you know, back on the landscape, that's going to be a major concern in counties like Mendocino, Sonoma, Napa, where you have a lot of grapes and stuff, but you also have a lot of, a lot of public, a lot of communities in those areas that you need to protect, and I'd rather burn that, that brush and the fuel around those communities during the right time under, you know, under our conditions, rather than have a fire explode, you know, when you have 40 mile an hour winds, you know, and you, you really risk losing those communities. So that's something that we're, we've dedicated to, you know, moving forward, having relationships towards improving communications and ensuring, you know, that we don't, you know, ruin anybody's livelihood, but also we're moving forward and leaning forward towards public safety and burning around communities.
Thank you. That's very good news.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Supervisor Jertie?
Yeah. So I saw that CalFire is working with Caltrans to clear brush, or fuel reduction anyway, for 900 acres between Ridgewood Grade and just south of Ukiah. Could you just explain a little bit more about that project?
Yeah, so I'm generations deep in the county here, and a local in the county started with CalFire two days after high school. I mean, right after, and, you know, since I started with CalFire, a, a lot of the fires that I fought throughout the years have been essentially on the grades, right? Rattlesnake, Ridgewood, Burke Hill, and in the median down here where you have the major population base in the Ukiah Valley. There was a thought brought forward, a great idea of, you know, why don't we go as soon as the grass turns, before fire season, cut a small handline in, burn off a handline or a wet line, and burn that grass off? That way, if a vehicle's dragging a chain, it squirts out some catalytic converter, it pops a tire, and the rim causes a fire, you know, you have that 10 or 15 feet of buffer of already burned material to where that fire, you know, has a, a way less likely chance of escaping our control, burning up, like the, the famous one is Ridgewood Grade. You get a fire on that thing almost every single year, and it goes for, it used to only go for, you know, three, five acres, something like that, but over the last several years, it's gone for 100 acres, 200 acres. A Burke Hill area and Nelson Ranch is the same deal. You get a fire in the middle of summer during the wrong conditions, and that fire's going to threaten some communities. But if we can go in and, and treat that fuel and burn that under our conditions with the resources already at scene, you know, early in the morning or in the evening, when the temperatures are down and the humidities are up, and there's less chance of spot fires, we're going to try to seize that opportunity and work collaboratively with Caltrans to, you know, reduce costs for mowing, reduce that fuel, reduce costs from fire suppression, and then make everybody in the county safer. Like the Redwood complex, you know, if we had a, a good median burn, instead of just, you know, 40 feet of pavement and then, you know, 20 feet of grass, 40 feet of pavement, maybe if you have just 150 feet of pavement and burned material, maybe that fire wouldn't spot across the freeway. Maybe we would have had, had a chance of stopping that thing. Stuff like that is what we're thinking of when we're collaborating on those projects. So I think that's a very exciting project, and I hope that decreases the median fires, the fires in and around the communities of the Ukiah Valley. And then my plan is, depending on resource availability, is to do that throughout the whole county to where, you know, we don't get so many vehicle-caused fires, and if we can knock those fires out, then we'll start concentrating on fire prevention in other areas.
Is this potentially an ongoing project throughout the year, or in multiple years, or is this a one-time project?
Not, not a one-time project, an ongoing project, and if we get the right fuel conditions and weather conditions, even later on this summer, we're going to try to seize some opportunities here in the Ukiah Valley to, to burn that, that, to burn that project. And then next year, we're going to continue to, to burn on this project, like I said, as soon as they got... soon as the grass turns or maybe in the fall. And then, we will look down the road to try to extend this project throughout the county. I think it's a really good project.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
Is there anything we can do to encourage the state to increase the residential burn size from four by four? I don't know if I've ever, I would call that a decorative burn. I don't think I've seen anybody actually. And the problem with putting rules in place and then not enforcing them is people think they can break other rules that we actually do want them to follow. Is there, do we have any sway in getting the state to give some local control to the CAL FIRE unit chief, for example, to set that size? I'm more concerned about people having defensible space, attending the fire, having water, maybe having a tractor there if it's large, than keeping it within a four by four.
Yeah, we've had this conversation before, and I have actually a leadership meeting on Friday that I'll bring that up to my northern region leadership team. I think that's a good point. We also have the ability for landowners to submit for broadcast burning and larger burn piles, say you've got some logging slash on your property or something like that. And that process is on the same website and is very simple to do that as well. So, I think that's a good point though, right? Don't we want to empower the citizens to do the good work of clearing around their houses? And that's something that I will bring up and see if I get traction at a higher level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today, Chief, and I would just say, you know, I appreciate the increased communication that the board has had, first with Chief Kendall and now with you, and I appreciate that that is ongoing. You've been very informative, and I appreciate having those opportunities to share that with the public. Are there any members of the public in the room that wish to ask questions or have comments about CAL FIRE's presentation this morning? Seeing no one come forward, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Seeing none with that, I would just accept a motion from the board to receive the presentation.
Move approval. Second.
Thank you. We do have to vote by the button on that.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item 4C, discussion and possible action, including recognition of employee service awards for eligible employees with 15 to 40 years of service. I have Deputy CEO Sherri Johnson to introduce the item.
Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board, CEO, County Council, Sherri Johnson, Deputy CEO. So, it's a pleasure this morning to be able to introduce the employees to recognize their service from 15 to 30 years. So, if we'll call your name, if you're here, please come up and you'll meet Chair Mulhern and Mandy from Human Resources. And if you would like to make a comment on your employee, you can please do that at public comment. Okay. Okay, thanks. So, for 15 years, we have Kristy Carlton with Social Services. And also 15 years, Megan DeFranco with the Auditor Controller's Office. We will make sure Megan gets her certificate. So, thank you, Megan. For 20 years, Connie Eaton with Social Services. Well, thank you, Connie. We'll make sure you get yours. Elva Mendoza from the Alternate Defender's Office. Thank you, Jessica. Marco Rodriguez from Planning and Building. Thank you, Marco. 25 years, Lieutenant Clint Wyatt from the Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Lieutenant. Francesca Rosales from Social Services. Thank you. Laura Cameron from Social Services. Thank you, Laura. Monica Vargas from Probation. All right, thank you, Monica. Rachel Kidd from Alternate Defender. Thank you, Rachel. Sherri Arrington from the District Attorney's Office. Tanya Mounts from the Assessor's Office. With 30 years of service, Robin Heller from Child Support. Thank you, Robin. And also with 30 years, Sharon McCutcheon from Social Services. Sharon? All right, well, thank you, Sharon. We'll make sure she gets her information. And before I turn it back over to Chair Mulhern, just a reminder, right after, we'll have a reception in Conference Room B. It was at A, we have moved it to B. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the friends and family that were able to come this morning. Are there any board members that wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
Good morning. Russ Ford, Planning and Building Services. I just wanted to say a couple of comments about Marco. So, Marco's been with Planning for five or six years, although I've known him for about 20. We began our careers together at the Assessor's Office. During that time, I've known Marco to be very conscientious with his work, always with a good attitude and willing to help people, also as someone that doesn't stop learning, that is always looking for ways to improve himself. I think a good example of that is when he came to Planning, it was as a staff assistant where he spent several years learning building permits and the counter-process, then went over to Commissioned Services, which is our agenda and commission team, and is now part of our Planning Division as a planning tech, learning to be a land use planner. So, I think Marco is a great asset to our department. He's really an example of what it means to be a good civil servant and to kind of embody that mentality. I think the department is lucky to have him, and I think the organization is lucky to have him. So, I wanted to congratulate him on this achievement today, and thank you guys for taking the time to recognize him.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Jesse Van Porus. I work in Adult and Aging Services Division of Social Services. I have two of my employees being recognized today, Francesca Rosales and Sharon McCutcheon, who couldn't make it. First, I'll speak on Francesca. When I came into Social Services in 2009, I started working in general assistance, and there was this really great binder that was at the desk. It had everything I needed about the program. Little did I know, several years later, I would be managing Francesca, who created that binder. It was amazing. I worked with her in Employment Services Division. She always advocated for her clients, working hard to get people jobs, working with families. She's been in Employment and Family Assistance Services for, gosh, 20 years now, 25 years now? She does a great job now as Program Administrator in Adult and Aging Services, assuring all of our policies stay up to date, working on contracts, and continuing to advocate for the programs that she's worked in. Sharon McCutcheon has worked for 30 years. She's Supervisor in Adult Protective Services. I also had the chance to work with her in general assistance. She was always, she has a tough exterior but a big heart on the inside, and you can tell that she cares about the people that she works with. She really cares about the families that she works with. She's always going to tell you how she feels about something, so you never have to second-guess if she's telling you her true opinion. And I really appreciate both of my staffs. I wanted a recognition for their service.
Good morning, Chair Mulhern, Members of the Board, CEO Antle, County Council. My name is Rachel Ebel Elliott. I'm the Acting Assistant Director for your Department of Social Services. We're here today to honor the commitment of several staff to this community. The Social Services staff named today, Kristy Carlton, Connie Eaton, Jessica Gold, Francesca Rosales, Laura Cameron, and Sharon McCutcheon represent combined 135 years of service to this county. Anywhere from facility supports to social work to public assistance administration. With 135 years of service, ranging anywhere individually from 15 to 30, you know that this is actually more than just a job to these colleagues, to our colleagues. This is a commitment, and this is a career for them. It's obvious that these staff have dedicated their time and energy to ensuring the safety of our coworkers and our customers, to linking our most vulnerable populations to needed services, and to maintaining the public trust through accurate accounting, regulatory compliance, and public assistance administration. These are leaders and mentors, helpers and motivators, and our county organization is better for their contributions. I sincerely offer my appreciation for each and every one of them and feel that I am fortunate every day to have the opportunity to work side by side with these individuals. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Morning, Sheriff Kendall?
Good morning. Chair Mulhern, Members of the Board, good morning, CEO Antle. Just wanted to tell you how happy I am that we were able to honor Clint Wyatt. Lieutenant Wyatt is serving us over on the coast. He's the coastal commander currently. I've got Captain Quincy Cromer with me today. We talked about 25 years of service, but there's a lot of things that happened during that timeframe. Clint started out with us in the Mendocino County Jail. He rose to the level of supervisor there, and then he came out to patrol. Clint served in pretty much every sector that we have now. He served in the Detective Bureau. He ran Narcotics Unit and Major Crimes Unit for me. Clint has always been the guy who can get things done, and he never says no. He simply tells you what he needs to accomplish the task. He's been put on some extremely dangerous and frightening things, but he's often reminded me, his father put him on a caterpillar at eight years old when he started logging. And so, you know, some things just aren't as frightening to him as what they would be to the rest of us. Captain Cromer, would you please?
I've had the pleasure of working with Clint for the majority of my career, and as the sheriff said, he is a go-to person because it's never, I can't do that, it's what I need to accomplish the goal that you have. And he has held almost every assignment that the sheriff's office has offered and constantly strives for improvements, for promotions, and other assignments. But if you go from corrections, he was a trainer and a supervisor in corrections, and then he took his career to the Field Services Division, worked primarily in the north sector, and then moved into investigations, and he's worked in every sector. And he worked in every investigations offering we had too, from the task force to the marijuana eradication team. And he's worked with federal agents and every other surrounding local law enforcement and has developed those networks to be successful in everything that he does. So, for my own career and for Clint's career, I just want to thank him for his service to Mendocino County. And on top of everything and all of his achievements that he's had in his career, he's a great person too, and a great friend to all of us. So, thank you, Clint.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public or county team that wish to come forward and comment? Seeing none, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature on the platform or press star nine. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board supervisor, Hashak.
Well, I'd just like to thank all the people recognized today. You know, public services are a great contribution to our communities. You know, we don't do it for the money or the fame or anything. It's really serving our fellow citizens and even non-citizens, but, you know, it's really something that people do from the heart. And so, thank you, whether you're in law enforcement, social services, or Public Defender's Office. You know, we're all trying to make our communities better places, so thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Magordi?
I'm glad we just take a moment to celebrate. We don't do that often enough. We hear lots of complaining and lots of things that are wrong, but this is really right. And thank everybody who is making a career in Mendocino County Government. It's really much appreciated. And as someone who worked for 33 years at UC Cooperative Extension, serving the community, I really appreciate the trajectory you're on and hope you stick with us. And congratulations.
Thank you. And I would just say, yes, congratulations. I get the opportunity to go to new employee orientation, and I get to thank people for their decades' worth of service. So, thank you to all of our county employees. The board will now recess for 25 minutes. We'll reconvene at 10:30 to a lot of time for those that have come today and the board members to meet in Conference Room B for a reception.
Answered any of my questions. It's just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating, and it can be very lonely, and having the home visitor changes death, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her.
And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próximo a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha tendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. En nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucho... En nuestro caso que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
¿Dónde nos visité? Porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras, y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very, it was very interesting and helpful. Very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know. That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know. I'm gonna be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her. She's gonna be with us for five years."
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar. Entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were gonna be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was gonna be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was gonna have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me. I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía. Pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know. When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, yeah, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give, again, your children that head start and education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless. And she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, because she's not just here for her. She's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. There's some perks, you know. They've got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was gonna have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Queríamos ser a quien naciera. Ya, ah, sí, ya quiero tener entonces ahorita lo que tenemos. Aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas lindas también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía. Pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me.
Board of Supervisors meeting for June 25th back to order. We are on item 4D. Discussion and possible action including adoption of a resolution setting Mendocino County elected officials' compensation for the assessor clerk recorder, auditor controller, treasurer tax collector, district attorney, and sheriff. This item is being brought forward by Human Resources Deputy CEO Sheri Johnson.
Yeah, good morning Chair, members of the board. CEO Antle, County Council, Sheri Johnson Deputy CEO. Mendocino County Human Resources completed a market study this last fiscal year that included the elected officials of the assessor clerk recorder, auditor controller, treasurer tax collector, district attorney, and sheriff. The elected official positions, with the exception of the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, have not seen a salary increase since 2017 but have received COLAs in years 2017 through 2021. We have, by direction of the board, by reducing the comparator counties to three comparator counties, which is Humboldt, Lake, and Sonoma. The out-of-market percentage is lessened. The proposed annual salary using the three comparator counties for the assessor clerk recorder, district attorney, and sheriff are proposed as, for the assessor clerk recorder, $161,100 annually. Auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, there was no change, but the salary is $179,792.65. District attorney, $217,380. And the sheriff, $213,350. If I have any questions, thank you Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Williams.
With the proposed adjustments today, will we have brought all county employees to market, understanding that the effective date varies depending on the group?
Um, yes, if I may through the Chair.
Please do.
Sheri Johnson. So yes, we have settled the contracts we have with all county employees at this time and brought them to market. Over a two-year period, I should say, thank you. And with the exception of public safety, they have been brought to market.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional questions from the board, so I'd like to open this item up to public comment. Are there any members of the room that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward, there are many, any members of the public on Zoom that wish to comment, they can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on their phone. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments or motion.
I move the recommended action.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, and vote by the button please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to item 4E. Discussion and possible action including approval of an employment agreement between the County of Mendocino and Darcy Antles to serve as Mendocino County's Chief Executive Officer for the term of March 12th, 2024 through July 11th, 2026, with compensation for the period commencing March 12th, 2024 through the first full pay period following Ms. Antles' performance evaluation in June of 2025, being $225,000 per year with a total annual compensation of $382,000, including benefits. As specified in the employment agreement, if certain conditions are met, Ms. Antles' compensation commencing the first full pay period following the June 2025 performance evaluation through the end of the agreement shall be increased to $225,000 per year with a total annual compensation of $425,000, including benefits.
I think you said 225 and it should be 250 in that last sentence.
Okay, well then it is 250,000 after the June 2025 performance evaluation. That is, yeah. And this agreement was negotiated with support from outside council, who I believe is on the line. Ruben Cruz, if any board members have questions. Otherwise, I'm not seeing any hands raised Supervisor McGordy.
Can you turn my mic on? Thank you. So, so one of the things in evaluation, I think is really critical, is that we include a 360 review. And I would direct staff to make that a condition.
Okay, are you making a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion to accept it with that provision.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'd like to invite public comment in, oh, excuse me Supervisor Jertie.
I think the report says it, but maybe HR could just reiterate verbally from the meeting that this is also consistent with the contracts that we just approved for the elected department heads and for other bargaining groups. It's based on a comparable salary survey, including Lake, Sonoma, and Humboldt. Might say that for the record for people who are watching the meeting.
If I may through the Chair, Deputy CEO Sheri Johnson. So yes, the CEO's salary was steadied with, as, with a market steadied, similar to all other county employees. With the exception for the department heads and the CEO and the electeds, we used the three comparator counties of Humboldt, Lake, and Sonoma. The other units are using the eight comparable counties in the cities. So yes, and this would be divided over the markets over two years. So yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I would like to invite public comment on this item. If there's any members of the public in the room that wish to comment, you can come forward at this time. If there are any members of the public online, you can use the raise hand feature. Seeing none, I have a motion on the floor, so if we could vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We are going to move on to item 4F. Discussion and possible action including appointment of an approval of employment agreement between the County of Mendocino and Michael F. Hill to serve as Mendocino County Public Defender with annual total compensation of $340,000, includes salary and benefits, commencing July 21st, 2024. Supervisor Williams.
Move approval.
Supervisor McGordy? Okay. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward.
Through the Chair if I may.
Yes.
Supervisor McGordy's mic wasn't on, so if we could just get a clear second for the record.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any hands raised online, so I'm going to call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 4G, discussion and possible action including appointment of approval of employment agreement between the County of Mendocino and Charlotte E. Scott to serve as Mendocino County's County Council pursuant to government code 27641 for the term of July 7, 2024 through July 6, 2028 in the amount of $200,000 per year with a total annual compensation of $340,000, including salary and benefits. Supervisor Williams.
Move approval. Second.
Of a motion by Williams and second by Jertie. I'll look to the room if there's anybody that wished to comment on this item. Supervisor McGordy, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So it's been very difficult for us to fill some of our positions because it's, I think there's been a dearth of applicants for a lot of our executive positions and following COVID, following kind of the exit of a lot of baby boomers. So I'm really pleased to see us hire the people that we have and I feel like we're fully staffed and we're not limping along like we were. There's still a few department heads we need to get, but this is, you know, again, kind of a, this is a good day.
Okay, thank you for that. And if we could vote by the button.
The motion carries unanimously.
So I'm just going to see if we are prepared to have item 4H heard. We get related to them. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to item 4H. Discussion and possible action including direction of staff regarding potential streamlining measures for the Mendocino Historical Review Board. Planning and Building Services Director Krog.
Working now? Okay, good. Sorry, good morning Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. So on August 29th, the Board of Supervisors had directed Planning and Building to work with the Golden Gate Bridge Initiative team to identify streamlining opportunities for the Mendocino Historical Review Board to reduce operating expenses. The department has worked with both internally and worked with the review board on several streamlining measures. We were in front of the review board on both April 8th and then again on June 3rd. And we originally proposed six items for streamlining MHRB operations. However, those were largely not supported by the review board nor the community. There was significant public opposition to many of those recommended changes. So we did receive direction from the review board on a reduced set that we could bring back for their consideration. So those included three items, which was adjusting the meeting time. It is to move up by an hour to 6:00 PM. Changing from the full narrative minutes to action minutes, which is similar to what the Board of Supervisors has for your minutes. And then also there was redline changes to their bylaws just to, one, bring it into conformance with the agenda order. And then additionally to switch from the, they previously utilized a different set of rule of orders and so moving it to Robert's Rules of Order. Those items were supported by the review board on their June 3rd meeting and attached to this agenda item is the new bylaws for the review board. So and then I want to speak a little bit about the cost associated with MHRB. So the original estimate provided to the board in August of 2023 was about $127,000 per year for the Historic Review Board. That prior estimate was based upon the approximation of the percent of staff time spent on items related to MHRB across an average of several years, including several years where MHRB workload was increased due to a variety of factors. Since August 2023, we have implemented more detailed time tracking, which has allowed us to really estimate using different methodology than what we could previously. We now track separate time tracking for each of our boards and commissions, so we really have a clear understanding of the true expenses at any one time. So the estimate that I provided within the agenda summary says $50,000 for the cost. And that's based upon review of the actual time spent by staff from July 1 through May 4th and then projected through the end, excuse me, May 2024, and then projected through the end of the fiscal year. The estimate only accounts for planning and building services staff time. It does not include county councils or any other office that may be involved in MHRB-related activities. So that's important to note. And then also that there is revenue that is received from permit applications, which covers the cost of processing those applications. So when I say $50,000, that is not including any revenue that may be received to offset that amount for the actual time spent by staff. So it usually comes in less. What I looked at for this last year, we got about $20,000 in application fees. So roughly about $30,000 general fund cost for planning and building alone. Again, not including any council time. So with all of, beyond the streamlining actions that the review board has now approved, we as a department also adjusted how our operations are handled with relation to MHRB. One of that was assigning a new staff member to act in the executive secretary role, who is incredibly efficient and we've seen cost savings there. We've reduced the number of staff members who work on MHRB-related projects and as a result, attend the meetings. So also reducing our overhead in terms of staff members working on those projects. We've also eliminated printed packets, which has significantly reduced our amount of time for our administrative staff in preparing for any hearing. Previously, it was printing, stuffing packets, collating, and then doing the mailings as well. So we've really reduced that amount of administrative staff time. So with all of this said, our recommendation to the board is to approve the streamlining measures that were adopted by the MHRB in the form of the revised rules and bylaws from June 3rd, 2024. And essentially to find that this action or the request from the board from August 29th, 2023 has been satisfied.
Thank you Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Hasek.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the Director and her team for making this, getting this to the finish line. And I would move the recommended action.
Thank you Supervisor Hasek.
Well, I'd like to thank Director Krog also for making these changes and working with the community out there. You know, I am concerned that going from 127 down to 50, down to possibly 20 or 30,000 dollars. I just, I'd like to review this in a year to make sure that those numbers are correct because it is significant. And, you know, changing the hour from seven o'clock to six o'clock, you know, I don't know if that's going to make that much impact, but I'm hoping that the changes that you did implement will, you know, reap those savings. So, so I would like to have it come back in a year.
I would gladly, if it would be acceptable to you, I could come back during Agenda Item 4A during the department head reports and just mark it for the end of next fiscal year to come back with a report out.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. And I'll second the motion.
Thank you Supervisor McGordy.
The town of Mendocino is a really important landmark for Mendocino County tourism. And I think it's great that the board continues to be interested in investing in maintaining the atmosphere. It is, it needs to be curated essentially because there's nothing quite like it. And I consider this the cost of doing business of part of our community. And it's not a huge investment, but I think that we get a very good payback if we continue to keep it an attractive and historic place, even though I know it's not easy to do all the time. But I think it's worth something that our board supports.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward and I have no hands raised online, I'd like to call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to item 4I. A Notice Public Hearing Discussion and Possible Action Including Adoption of Resolution Adopting the 2425 Annual Report of the Mendocino County Business Improvement District in Living an Annual Assessment for the Bid in Fiscal Year 2425. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Proper notice has been established and all correspondence, including telephone calls, have been sent to your email.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and we will hear first from staff and then from the public. Go ahead please with your presentation.
Thank you. Good morning Supervisors Adrian Thompson, Planning and Building Services. I wanted to note that a revised item was attached this morning to the bid that changed some of those staff costs. So first I wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, that was from direction of the board in May. Their meeting to look at an estimated staff cost. These are very rough numbers. We have time tracked much more diligently on these. These are very rough numbers. We have time tracked much more diligently on these items. But as it gets toward the bottom, there are some estimated future tasks. And so that's really a big unknown at this point, what those future tasks could end up being for the conversion. But up through tasks, you know, one, meeting support, the TOT collection, quarterly payments for the contractor, and then this portion of bid annual report process, those items have been pretty well organized and captured through the various departments. And we did an effort to combine between the tax collector, the executive office, planning and building, and county council hours to kind of give you an overall view of that. With that, I am available for questions or comments from the board. And I believe the executive director for VMC is available online also.
Thank you. Supervisor Hasek?
Yeah, thank you for this information. Is, so out of the 31,000, is any of that recouped for the county or is that just our contribution at this point?
Thank you, Supervisor. If I may, through the board, there is a 3% administrative fee that is collected by the county. That reimbursement, it typically goes to the treasure tax collector because it's for the processing of the TOT. So we do get roughly the 3% changes per year based on the collections. So last year's estimate was 30,000 back into the TOT for the tax collector. You can see that they estimated spending about $42,000 in staff time. So there'd be about a $12,000 general fund cost to the treasure tax collector's office. And then Planning and Building, we estimate, you know, roughly another 10,000 to 12,000 of our own time, that there is no reimbursement outside of that 3% administrative fee.
Supervisor Jerdy?
Yeah, on Friday night, I wrote some questions to the CEO and county staff. And it's, I don't know if it went to you or not, Adrian. But my questions had to do with some issues that have come up over the years with the bid. So for example, we're all aware that the county uses standardized reimbursement processes for travel reimbursement. So the County of Mendocino, any county employee that travels out of county can use mileage or fast reimbursements, or they can, it's published by the IRS. For meals, it's a standardized rate. And several years ago, I was on an ad hoc and we met with Visit Mendocino, different people at Visit Mendocino at the time, and they had assured us that they would, going forward, use the county's reimbursement process. But I've, I've never actually seen that they've adopted that as a policy. So my understanding is that we have a certain action here today. In the next month or two, there will be something else coming to the board having to do with a contract with Visit Mendocino. So what I'm, I'm raising today in advance of that contract coming back to the board to see if there's interest by the board. But it seems to me that these are funds collected by the, by the county. These are public dollars. Virtually all dollars they spend are public dollars, that we should, one, we should assure going forward that they are utilizing the same reimbursement rate for meals and travel as the county employees. And, and then second from, secondary from that, so anyway, I don't know if there's any comments on that point at this point.
Director Krog?
Thank you, Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. As you stated, I believe a contract is coming forward. That's handled by the Economic Development Team out of the Executive Office. And I believe that's coming forward next month, July 9. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So I don't know, I want to take these one at a time, but I, I guess I presume that everybody on the board would want to assure that these public dollars would be spent in the same way that county dollars are spent. So, you know, if there's a limit, which there is, for county employees to get reimbursed for hotel lodging or for meals or for travel, that they would use the same reimbursement rate. So, so for recap for members of the audience, if a member, if a county employee traveled out of county and spent more than the allotted amount on food and wanted to be reimbursed, they would be reimbursed for the county's maximum. They just would pay the extra out of their pocket. So it doesn't prohibit someone from choosing which restaurant they go to. Some of us actually don't actually apply for reimbursement for meals out of county because that's just the way we operate. But, but anyway, so just looking to see if, is there agreement that that should be something that would be worked into, into the contract to assure that they are following that practice.
I have a question for the Executive Office or possibly County Council, and that is, is that standard procedure for all contracts? I mean, my concern would be that if you do it for this one agency, that you would have to do it for all agents.
Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel. So I don't know that it is a standard contracting policy for all of our vendors. I think typically the county doesn't add that as a requirement of the contractors we have. But I can, I know that the proposed contract that is moving through the county routing process right now, that may be coming forward next month with the MCTC, I believe that is something we could look into and see if that is something that could be added, if that's the will of the board. It, it is something that we haven't added on any other contract that I know of. But I do see some reference in the contract to the incorporating language into the bylaws. I think focusing on the ordinance, that's another point, is I don't know if there, that level of detail is in our ordinance, which also kind of controls the, the governing board and advisory board processes for this bid.
Thank you.
If I could, I just, I, I don't see this as the equivalent of a nonprofit or a, or a company that we're contracting with. This, these are public dollars collected by the county, and this is under the state code for business improvement. This is a special district. So they would presumably, on their own, choose to use the same reimbursement rate that all other local governments use. But if they're not choosing it, I think that the county, because we're aware, in, at least in the past, they weren't following it, I think we should insist on them following same reimbursement rates that is very common within local government. It's abnormal for a government agency not to comply with the, with a standardized travel reimbursement rate.
Okay. Supervisor Williams, did you want to respond to that or did you have other questions or comments? I wasn't sure Supervisor Jerdy, if you were done.
To that.
Okay.
Is there any possibility this could cost the county more, not less? And I, I'm asking all that legitimately don't know what their current policy is and how it maps to the county process. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to make a change and find out it's actually costing us more public dollars.
It's a standard reimbursement. It's reimbursement. So it's a max. So you can get up to a certain amount in reimbursement. So I, I can't imagine it would be an increase in costs. It would be.
I don't know what, I don't know what the policy is today. So it's hard to juxtapose. I would want to be sure before making this change that we're actually saving money, not incurring additional.
So we don't have that contract on today's agenda. So future agenda, so the question would be for the board, do we want to direct staff to look into this prior to it coming?
I see Supervisor McCordy's pin up, and I understand what you're saying about sort of being a, a special district or a special situation. I think one might also consider fire department, their reimbursement rate. And I know that we're looking at policy one. And so I would rather just take an all-inclusive look at reimbursement rates and what the county does or doesn't do as it relates to meals and travel for anybody that receives government fund. I, I see, I see where you're headed. My concern continues to be that this is one organization that's being singled out. Supervisor McCordy and Supervisor Hasek?
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking the same thing. I just wonder what is our policy for reimbursement with special districts? So do they follow county guidelines?
Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel, through the chair. I don't know that we have a specific policy that governs all special districts. But, but that is something we could, I could look into to see if there is any, anything. But to my knowledge, we do not. I think that there are, special districts have other governing laws that, you know, depending on the type of special district. And, but I don't believe that the county necessarily requires the special districts that are dependent on the county to follow the county-specific policy. We can look at that more closely, but I just don't know definitively the answer right now.
Yeah. Well, and to reinforce what Supervisor Williams said, we don't want to end up paying more just to have them conform. So.
Thank you for that. And Supervisor Hasek?
Well, going back to the costs that the county is incurring at this point, so it looks like, you know, we get the 3% and that covers $30,000. And we're also spending an additional $31,000 at this point. So it, it seems to me that if, if you, if we were to get another 3%, it would kind of cover us and we'd break even. And especially in the light of, you know, bid proposal to be increased, it just seems like we should work that into the contract of whatever goes forward is that we're getting our cost recovery on this. Is, what would it take to do that?
Thank you, Supervisor. If I may, through the chair, I'll need to do some research with county council on the pending bid conversion. That is an ordinance amendment. I know we plan to repeal and replace the ordinance for 5.140 related to bid when that goes forward at the end of the calendar year. So 2024, 2025, we are looking at replacing that ordinance, which has the 3% administrative cost. The contract with MCTC is separate. I don't know that there's any reimbursement there. I couldn't speak to the contract.
So the 3% is not giving us what we need for cost recovery on this?
It does not provide full cost recovery.
I guess I, I would like to look into what, what would be cost recovery. It looks like 6% from this amount that we're receiving from the bid at this point.
I see Supervisor Jerdy's pin is still up. But again, I would just say, are we treating one agency different than we're treating others because we disapproved the Mendocino Historical Board from getting general fund dollars that we're not directly reimbursed for? So Supervisor Jerdy, did you have a question or a comment? Director Krog?
If I may just comment on Supervisor Hasek's commentary on this. So I think it's something that we can look into about that percentage because it is written into the ordinance at this point. But one thing that I think is important to note about the cost estimates provided, we have possibly abnormal costs for this year because we are going through this conversion process. And so those costs are not going to be carried forward necessarily in future fiscal years. So it's just important to be mindful of that this year is a little bit of an abnormal year for what we normally see from the bid. So we would just want to make sure that as we're going through this, that we're really looking at what those costs are for a normal year versus this, which is an abnormal year.
Yeah, very good.
Supervisor Jerdy, did you want to continue with your questions before we go to the public?
Yeah, I'd have one more. So at a very recent meeting, I think it was in May, when we had a presentation from the Mendocino County Tourism Commission, otherwise known as Visit Mendocino, their presentation including, included a list of their staff. And in response to a question from me, their director identified one of their employees as a, as he characterized it, a full-time employee. That full-time employee, as I think everybody in this room is aware, is also a full-time employee of the state of California, another employer. So it, I think, now that the board is aware of that, it, it, it strikes me as extremely unusual to see an employee who is deemed to be full-time, working full-time for two different government agencies. I've never heard of it before. And so it's not a question that would normally come up. And I, I would like for the board to give direction to staff to look at some kind of limit on the number of hours that an employee of Visit Mendocino can work for Visit Mendocino if, if they're working elsewhere. So it's not uncommon in Mendocino County for someone to have multiple jobs and to have, and for some people to work more than 40 hours a week. Totally understand that. But I think there's some reasonable limit. And above that limit, it's, it's questionable where the person's time is actually going. So, you know, I would take it at if, if someone is an employee of Visit Mendocino and they are full-time, if they're a full-time employee somewhere else, that they would be eligible to work for up to, and I'm going to pick, I'm going to pick 10 hours a week. So that'd be 50 hours a week. They could work 10 hours a week for Visit Mendocino. Now, if they're a full-time employee of Visit Mendocino, they can work 10 hours a week somewhere else. That'd be 50 hours. But it's, seems highly unusual. I've never heard of it before, where someone works full-time for two different government agencies. And at this point, now the board is aware of this, and these are funds and a plan that we're approving, I think, I think it's incumbent upon us to direct staff to look into this and establish some sort of reasonable cap. And so I, I, I again propose a maximum for their employees to work is 50 hours a week, 10 hours for Visit Mendocino, or full-time for Visit Mendocino, and 10 hours somewhere else. But I, you know, I, I think when I've mentioned this to members of the public, the question that's come up from members of the public, well, is this a gift of public funds? Because how could, how could you, as a supervisor, know that someone is working full-time for two different agencies? And I, I can't answer that question. I don't know how we could possibly know if someone was working full-time for two different government agencies. So again, it seems appropriate for the board to give direction to staff to look into some sort of contract amendment that limits the number of hours that employees of Visit Mendocino can have in, in their multiple jobs.
So I'll look to my colleagues before we open that up to public comment. And I would just say, I, I have three jobs. I work a minimum of 70 hours a week. That's on a, on a white week. So I think that for me, limiting hours that another agency could have an employee work for seems very much out of my lane and my role as a county supervisor and what, what my role is. I understand the concern that you're trying to address. And I think that, that the agency also understands that. I think other agencies understand that. But because I am a person that works three jobs and more than 70 hours of work a week, I, I really just think it's highly inappropriate. So I look towards my colleagues before we move on to public comment of their thoughts about that. Supervisor McCordy?
I kind of feel the same way. I, I don't know how much you want to micromanage other agencies to get funding from us. And personally, it's not something I want to do. If, if there's a concern about it, a public complaint, they should go directly to the agency. I like Supervisor Mohren, have at least one of their jobs, sometimes two. And so I'm still active as an emeritus University of California academic. And there are weeks where I put in a lot of hours. And I don't, I don't think it's unusual sometimes to put in 80 hours if it's a really tough week. If it's harvest and we have a board meeting, that's probably what I'm going to do. So I, I don't really feel comfortable for us to start scrutinizing the employment practices of people who have contracts with us. It, it doesn't feel good to me.
Supervisor Hasek?
Well, I, I put in a lot of hours too. You know, I don't know, I don't count them up. But I do work a lot of hours and I only have one employer. And so that's the county of Mendocino. And in light of this, this situation that Supervisor Jerdy brought up, you know, it seems like, well, I, I know we have policy for a county employee working other jobs. And it says something to the effect that it can't hinder your performance in the, the job that you're doing for the county or some language like that. County Council, can you, do you have any insight on that?
Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel, through the chair, if I may. I don't have the language of that specific policy. I do know what you're referring to. But I, I would point out that that is a policy for county employees. And I think one thing I, if we are directed, if county council is directed to look into this, one of the things we'll have to assess, when, similar to what I've said previously, we typically do not get into the details of the hours of our vendors, of the employees of our vendors, because that can tend to compromise the independent contractor status that we're trying to maintain. You know, we aren't employee, they aren't, our vendors are not employees of the county. And so that would be the analysis I would be, you know, most concerned about or would want to look at more closely. But certainly, if the board, if it's the will of the board to have us look into that, we will. But that's just my initial instinct, the questions and comments post.
Yeah, I guess, you know, on that vein, I would think that Visit Mendocino has a, has a board and that they, they should be the ones, you know, making sure that their employees are giving them the 40 hours of full-time service that they're, they're paying for.
Supervisor Williams, did you want to comment before I go to Ramon Jimenez, the director of VMC?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I'd like to go online now. Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to go online first, related to public comment. And Ramon, did you have any questions or comments moving forward? Or do any board members have any questions for Ramon after that conversation?
I guess I would just ask Ramon if he has any feedback on that. Does he think it's appropriate for someone to be a full-time employee at two different places of employment, his place of employment plus another agency?
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
Ramon, we are having some technical difficulties. Please, just give us one second. Okay, you should be able to be heard now.
Hello, Ramon Jimenez, Executive Director of Visit Mendocino County. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I wanted to start off with in regards to the cost to the county for administration. I wanted to start off with in regards to the cost to the county for administering the bid collections. The terminology, the way it's written on there is that it's an up to 3% assessment of the bid collections. However, from what I understand and what I would expect to happen is that we are billed for all the hours that actually go into assessing this. We have no problem with paying the reimbursement to the county for the time that it took them to put all the collections together and managing that whole project. So typically, the way it happens is at the end of quarter four, once collections happened, the total billable hours that have been collected are deducted from that quarter four bid bill, which from last year's assessment was a little shy of $32,500. In regards to the employee, I can't go into, I can't go into comments and discuss employee matters with anyone outside of our board of directors. But board of directors approved the job description, approved the employee, and they're fulfilling it, they're fulfilling their job as required and as hired to do so.
Thank you.
Ramon, follow-up. Could you let us know if the job description includes, is this based on an hourly reimbursement for hours submitted or is this a salaried position?
It's a salaried position.
Okay, so there's no hours submitted to Visit Mendocino showing the 40 hours a week?
The tasks that are required to be done are being completed as required when they are required to be completed by. So she's fulfilling her job.
Okay. And then follow-up question. Does Visit Mendocino have a policy prohibiting board members from receiving, say, contracts from Visit Mendocino to perform work for Visit Mendocino?
We do not have any board members that are employees or contractors of Visit Mendocino.
Okay. Is there a policy prohibiting it?
I would have to go and double-check, but I would have to go, yeah, I would have to double-check, but that would just seem like a conflict of interest on all topics.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I guess, maybe you're aware, do you have a policy with a standard reimbursement rate for meals, travel, et cetera?
We do have an expense reimbursement policy internally.
Can you provide that to the county?
I'd have to double-check with the board if we can share it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised online for this item. Are there any members in the room that wish to come forward related to this item? Not seeing anyone come forward in the room. So I'll bring it back to staff for any final remarks or any supervisors for any questions or final comments.
Supervisors, no final remarks.
Thank you. Are there any final comments? Supervisor McGordy?
So it sounds like Visit Mendocino is willing to reimburse based on hours expended by our staff, which I think is a good idea. Since we're in the financial situation that we are, we should be sure that they get billed for everything that the county provides for them.
Thank you. Supervisor Hashak?
So is that happening? Are we billing them for the hours?
If I may, through the chair. As Ramon Jimenez had commented, at the tax collector's office at fourth quarter collections, they bill the 3% administrative fee. But that's the only billable hours, is that 3% admin cost, which the county does pull for reimbursement, but it covers treasury tax collector hours. It won't cover the executive office economic development team, and it will not cover planning and building hour services. Those go beyond the 3% total that we're allowed to reimburse.
Supervisor McGordy?
Well, can we look at that again and renegotiate it?
I don't want to speak out of turn. I think Assistant County Council, Charlotte Scott?
Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council, through the chair. I believe, you know, we have to look at the ordinance language, which says that, it says the county shall be entitled to charge an amount equal to its actual costs of collection and administration, not to exceed 3% of the assessments collected. So that's what we're currently limited to. If the board has any direction about looking into whether there could be an ordinance amendment, we can certainly research that and look into that and assist staff.
Well, I think that since there is an ordinance amendment pending, it can be included in as reimbursable. And I just look towards my colleagues to see if they desire to have that included as reimbursable expense for all of the departments that work on the bid.
I would.
And I think that that was what I was talking about earlier.
Okay.
I would support that as well.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just at this point, I am going to officially close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion for consideration. Supervisor Hashak?
I'll move approval of the resolution and the recommended action.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. And vote by the button, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Supervisor Jerdy?
Just a question for the board or the chair, someone, if a member of the public had concerns about some of the spending practices at Visit Mendocino, to whom would they go? If not the board of supervisors?
Well, I did hear one supervisor say that they should go to the board of Visit Mendocino, but Supervisor Williams, did you have a comment?
Withdrawn.
I am only one supervisor, and I would just say that the most appropriate place for people that have concerns about how the board is, the board of Visit Mendocino is using the funds that they should go to that board. And that, I think, you know, goes back to conversations that have happened over the time that the organization has been in existence, from everything to where billboards are being placed, which campaigns are being utilized. And I think that probably if people have feedback for that agency, the most appropriate place to do that is with that board. But certainly, welcome to take any suggestions from my colleagues. Supervisor McGordy?
I agree with you. I think that's always start at the lowest level if you have concerns, to find out what they have to say about it. If they're feeling like their employees are meeting their stated objectives in employment, if there's something that you don't like in terms of representation of Mendocino County. You know, my experience has been that they're pretty responsive. They are publicly. I think that that's a good place to go for people who are concerned about their activities.
Thank you. I'd like to take the agenda just slightly out of order and go to item 4K, discussion and possible action, including direction to staff regarding waiver of violation penalty fees for building permits and any required discretionary permits for the Fort Bragg Rural Fire Protection District fire training apparatus structure. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah. So Fort Bragg Fire asked the county what time this would be heard.
Okay.
And I relayed that to the clerk, and we got an answer back approximately this afternoon.
Okay, we are ahead of schedule.
Yeah, so I think they're coming at around 1:30 to 2:00. It'd be better if they were here for that item.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and why don't we do the CEO report, supervisors' reports, and then we'll adjourn to our closed session, working lunch. Chief Executive Officer Antle?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to start off this month with animal care. On May 3rd of 2024, animal care services assisted second chance food break in Fort Bragg by holding a vaccination clinic with the assistance of the veterinarian Weiss, the animal care clinic staff, Sarah O'Rourke and Sam McMeness, were able to see over 105 dogs, resulted in 31 microchips being implanted, 273 vaccinations being administered, and 19 dogs received health exams. So thank you for that outreach for our animal care center. Behavioral Health is announcing that this month is post-traumatic stress PTSD Awareness Month. It is important time to reduce stigma and raise public awareness. PTSD is a mental health condition that can occur after experiencing or witnessing traumatic events such as combat, natural disasters, car accident, sexual assault, anyone can develop PTSD. Also, Behavioral Health is recognizing LGBT Pride Month. I think the county did a celebration earlier this month for that. SUDT will begin juvenile justice summer program in June. The plan is to have groups of SUDT on Mondays and then work with dogs at the animal control center on Wednesdays. The youth have been identified and they're scheduled, six scheduled to begin. Good way to see our departments collaborating to support our community. DOT report we have this month and road maintenance, there's several of road maintenance crews are out working this time of the year. So please be aware and take safety precautions when you're anywhere near our road crews and/or state road crews. Environmental Health, the REHIT team held its annual exercise to refresh the skills of responders in order to respond more effectively throughout and confidently in the event of household hazardous waste response. This was in collaboration with Mendocino Recycle Staff. The division successfully hired a program manager who will help manage both land use and consumer protections programs in Ucaya and Fort Bragg. At the direction of the BOS, the division will be issuing 44 refunds to consumers who have paid three or more event permits for hazardous and non-hazardous. This refund will be the difference between the fee they paid on their permit to operate based on the fee schedule adopted February 4th. We have a report from the University of California Extension Office. This month, they are celebrating a new club joining 4-H, and that's out of our Hoplink Club there, just down south. So nice to have an additional program. So 4-H is doing many things throughout, and they are developing the youth in our county through initiative and leaderships, programs for everyone out there of youth age. Please look into the 4-H. Have an additional memo. Their fair is coming up here, the first part of August. Go out and support all the animals that are out this year. Facilities is, countywide utility consumption is on a decline compared to last year, so we're excited about that. And the county is continuing to realize savings from both electric and gas utilities. The jail project is set for completion on October 25th. There's quite a lot going on up there, a lot of dirt work at this time, building in that infrastructure that is needed. Telematics, we have installed on 125 devices in the county at this time, and we are looking at data and policies on how to regulate some of the information that we are getting. It's a nice addition to have that on the vehicle. The library, Round Valley Library, is partnering with Mendocino County Social Services to bring a series of programs called Social Services Navigation on the fourth Thursday of each month. Topics that are covered include Medi-Cal, CalFresh, in-home support services. Again, another wonderful opportunity to see our departments collaborating. The Ucaya Library Branch invites all children ages five to 17 to join them in their 35th year of hosting kids' farmers market. This year's farmers market would be held on Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. till noon, June 19th, and continuing through August 7th. Public Health is recognizing Alzheimer's Brain Awareness Month. Alzheimer's is a type of dementia that causes problems with memory, thinking, and behavior. Alzheimer's disease is progressive through several stages, each with a different characteristics. People with Alzheimer's or other dementia often withdraw from society and even families. Please join and learn about Alzheimer's and Alzheimer prevention. Public Health is also, this is, is wanting people to be aware of the high temperatures that can be dangerous. Again, this summer, we're expecting high temperatures and high winds, so please take care of yourself, stay shaded, drink lots of fluid, and be aware of the signs if you're under extreme heat conditions. Social Services, the Adult and Aging Services Division would like to recognize June as Elder Independent Abuse Month. June 15th each year is recognized worldwide as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. At the state level and historically in Mendocino County, the entire month of June is recognized include heightened awareness of abuse independent adults as well as individual over the age of 60, hopefully leading to increased prevention efforts. And the largest cause there of elder abuse is neglect. In May, the grant unit prepared and submitted two applications totaling $450,000 on behalf of Mendocino County and is in the process of developing two additional applications totaling $2.3 million, scheduled to be submitted in June. Have a nice write-up about the work that they continue to do. And I think I've covered the majority of the rest of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Are there any board members that have questions regarding the CEO report? Seeing none, I just want to thank all the departments and the CEO for providing the information and sharing with the public the work that the county is doing in a cohesive manner. Are there, let's go ahead and just close that item. I do believe that we have a member of the public that missed public expression for non-adjourned items, and so I would like to reopen that item before I move to supervisors' reports before the closed session. So if you're in the audience and have an item on a non-adjourned item, comment. I'm sorry. There was no public comment for the CEO report, so I'm going to go ahead and move back to the public expression. You can come forward, apologize about the process.
My name is Andrea Nagy. I came over from Manchester to address this team board about two issues. The first one is about the district attorney's budget and how we're no longer prosecuting property crimes. Last August, I was a victim of an odometer rollback fraud in Willetts that cost me $9,000. I don't imagine the car has much of a resale value, the tempered odometer. Fortunately, it was not a case of whodunit. The DMV investigator out of Santa Rosa spent over six months working the case, identifying the perpetrator, setting him up in a sting operation, and taking him down in a controlled buy in public Willetts. At the time of his apprehension, guy had 15 sets of keys, 15 matching titles in his mobile office backpack. He was referred for felony impersonation charges. And three months later, the case is still under review, meaning there's no. Not charging someone, takes along his son, found another person, will only embolden him. Full spread the word that Mendocino County is a place where one can get away with this type of crime. Allowing this type of fraudulent activity on a career basis to go on with impunity once brought to light also makes a mockery out of the DMV investigators' $13,000 a month If this situation is a result of the DA having two prioritized which crimes get prosecuted, then it appears law and order is on the chopping block like so many other counties. We no longer have a mobile pay-and-neuter unit, even though we received $100,000 grant for one. Hasmobile no longer comes down to the South Coast, and to the best of my knowledge, there's no recycling buyback center anywhere on the coast. I don't remember the last time there was higher recycling on the coast. I don't remember the last time there was higher recycling on the coast. Wondering if we forgot to pay our property taxes. Next up, I host Airbnb on Mountain View Road. Three of my neighbors within two miles of my house also have a short-term Airbnb rental listing. 11% of our income, most of the county's fancy occupation, bid taxes, in addition to the sales tax revenue generated by our guest shopping, dining, recreation. Many people over the past eight years have mentioned their reason for coming to our area as a desire to escape the congestion of their city and to experience the natural beauty of county's coastal. Lately, I heard from three separate sets of guests about the unsightly seen opious quantity of garbage alongside Mountain View. This is troubling on many levels, mainly because my neighbors and I have been cleaning up various piles year after year, and we simply cannot keep up volume more. I have a handout that could be looked at with some pictures.
Thank you, and if you could just leave that with the clerk.
I'm not done. Want to, voila.
Okay.
But I'm almost done. I'll keep it brief.
Yeah, we're just out of time, so if you could go ahead and wrap up, thank you.
We have one or more serial dumpers who have apparently found Mountain View Road a suitable disposal site. It is readily ascertainable that several trash piles originated from the same household based on the numerous identical product packages they contain. This again is not a case of done it in the street, but rather a case of Alice's Restaurant. Guy put his name on an envelope at the bottom of the ton of garbage and his daughter's name. I was taking my mother on a tour of the various dump sites last December. We actually witnessed a man with a pickup dumping mattress and obtained his license plate. In several locations I cleaned up, I found store receipts mixed in with the purchaser's customer loyalty accounting. Armed with this evidence, I finally reported it to sheriff's office, two separate ways. I texted one of the South Coast deputies sending him ten details, just the response stating that a cold case of littering would probably not get prosecuted, especially without eyewitness accounts for this time. I also called Fort Bragg Dispatch. Another deputy returned my call, asked for the name on the envelope, point arena P.O. box, and within seconds responded that they didn't have a contact by that name. He stated that local physical address is not required for P.O. box rental, although as a resident entitled to a free P.O. box due of USPS home delivery, my driver's license, and a second form of ID such as facility bill reflecting local service address is diligently verified by my postal worker annually, even after 23 years of giving. Clearly, no one at the sheriff's office is prepared for the littering caller, especially knowing that their report would likely end up in the ground file. So I understand incentives to save $720 at his disposal stave me an idealist, but I refuse to accept this as the hallmark of modern industrial. I believe the revenue component of the $1,000 fine for littering statute per incident had this type of activity in mind, and if pursued and prosecuted, give great financial benefit from Mountain View Road alone. I also urge the board subsidize a free dump day, maybe a couple times per month at each transfer station for low-income households in order to offer an alternative to the filing of our free. But that's not it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I want to really just appreciate that you came here today to talk about all those things with the board. Fortunately, I think that we have addressed some of these problems, but maybe it just hasn't gotten to you, the information. Mendo Recycle has changed. We are trying to address illegal dumps, and so if you wouldn't mind just giving, if Deputy CEO Sherri Johnson wouldn't mind just taking your phone number and email, I'd be happy to call you and give you those updates about when the Hazmobil is coming to the coast and also when the recycling buyback center comes. It's mobile at this point, but it is coming to the coast, so it just seems as though the information isn't getting to you.
I'm out of loop.
And I'm happy, I'm happy to have a one-on-one conversation with you because I know that, you know, you're passionate about it, so I think that word of mouth from folks that are passionate about these issues helps us spread the message further because clearly it didn't, it didn't get to you, to get to the right people to try to address the problem. So thank you very much for coming today.
That's awesome, I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I apologize about that, but I really wanted for that speaker to be heard. Supervisor Jordy?
I'm just asking, since there was a specific request for referral to the DA, and, you know, we don't direct the DA in how he does his job, but seems appropriate for us to just forward the letter from the constituent to the district attorney?
Sure. I have no objections to that. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I agree, and maybe further ask, how do we get a handle on this situation? Because we have very high disposal costs and we have no enforcement, and it creates an environment where, you know, people will throw trash down a hillside because they know worst case, those totals will get passed around here on social media. That's, that's the worst case in Mendocino County for dumping a large amount of waste on the hillside.
I think that, yeah, working with the sheriff's office, which has been part of the changes that are related to illegal dumping and using their community services officer, which is something Sheriff Kendall has spoken about, and then working with the DA, working with the waste hauler, which is now one unified waste hauler, and I know that I've emailed this board several times about what to do about illegal dumping, and I'm happy to share that again with the public and with the board so that everybody is on the same page. And of course, I'm happy to work with the DA and the sheriff to try to figure out the best way to deal with this problem. I think that we have used Mendo Recycle as an opportunity to be able to clean up illegal dumps, and I think it's clear that that message is not getting out enough. So continue to work on that. Thank you. I would like to hear the supervisors' reports before we go to closed session, so I'd like to start with District Five Supervisor Williams?
No comment.
Thank you Supervisor Jordy, District Four.
Sure, since our last meeting, we had a Mendocino, Seminole Clean Power meeting, I'm sorry, and again, I think as I mentioned, the last report that rates for this coming year will be, I believe, at 7% lower if you are a Seminole Clean Power customer than if you are not using Seminole Clean Power and getting your power source from PEGNY. Of course, our bill is paid directly to PEGNY, who collects the bill, because they're also being paid to maintain the transmission line, so Seminole Clean Power's portion of the bill is related to your power source, your electricity. Other items, the Seminole Clean Power meeting for this month won't be on the first Thursday of the month because of, that is 4th of July, so it will be on July 12th. And tomorrow is the monthly Mendocino Transit Authority meeting. I believe we're adopting the budget at that meeting, which we've already seen, so those are some items. And as we heard earlier today, there's, I think, an interesting partnership between Caltrans and CalFire to try to address an issue that's been noticed and observed over the years, which is that there's many acres of land directly adjacent to Highway 101 where chains have been dragged. We've had a member of the public speak to the Mendocino Council governments and to the MTA, well, Mendocino Council governments concerned about chains being dragged and fires being started, and so I'm grateful to hear that CalFire and Caltrans have got an ongoing strategy there to minimize any potential for fires along the roadside there.
Thank you. Third District Supervisor Hasek?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Executive Office CEO for attending the meeting about the dog situation in Covelo. We've had a couple of those meetings. We've had collaboration with the tribe and police chief up there, and really kudos to Rich Molinari and his work and efforts, and I guess that he's leaving county employment or left, but really, there was, it's a, it's a tough problem to deal with. It's a longstanding problem, but we're still looking for solutions. Let's see, thanks again to the Executive Office and County Council for their work on the Sherwood Special Assessment. We're, you know, it's out the ballot and it's, it will come back to the board in a public hearing on July 23rd, but, you know, certainly it's a, it's a pilot program and we're learning a lot, we're finding challenges along the way, but we're getting through it and we'll be better because of it. Let's see, I attended a AAA, the Area Agency on Aging, meeting the other day, and we decided to change the way, the formula for reimbursement to senior centers, and the formula now will have a baseline for each senior center in the, in the program, and then also a per-meal supplement. So, so that's the way we're going to do it. We felt like that was the best, because in these times, we're seeing that the government might be clawing back some of the funding for some of these necessary programs. I went to a Juneteenth celebration. Royal Tognoli, who was a long-term county employee, was one of the main organizers. It was a great celebration and great music, food, and, and real powerful messages about the African-American experience in Mendocino County and throughout the country. So I appreciate her work on getting that together. The TOT, I've heard that, you know, we had this discussion the other day, but I heard that there's about eight counties in the state that are putting it on, putting increases to their TOT on the November ballot. One of the counties, I think, was Riverside, was using it, dedicating that money to roads in Riverside, so I thought that was interesting. And I also attended a webinar with the Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara, and he was talking about if we do fuel reduction programs and home hardening and some of these like emergency access routes, that those are all things that they're trying to make insurance companies recognize those in their modeling for the cost and make sure that that's recognized and lowers the cost of insurance for communities. So that could really help some of the work that the Mendocino County Fire Safe Council's doing and also the local fire safe communities. And then we have a General Government Committee meeting tomorrow. One of the agenda items is to look at the reduction of, that we put in the place of the cannabis tax, we put in a 50% reduction will be, that's one of the agenda items, is to look into seeing what we can do with that. And as far as, oh, this woman who just spoke, that I was on a Caltrans meeting and they were talking about the Mattress Recycling Council and that they have grants, they're funded by a fee charged on every new mattress sold in California, and they have grants for free recycling of mattresses. And so could be something that Mendo Recycle or whoever can look at and apply for that kind of funding, and also CalRecycle has a grant for tire disposal. A lot of that stuff going on.
Anybody can take a mattress, please, anybody can take a mattress to any transfer station in Mendocino County for free, so please spread the word about that. It's a service we have in our county, and yeah, it's, it's wonderful. Thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
So the first thing I wanted to just ask, the county council and CEO is our flag policy, it came up during Pride Month, and there were, there were members of the community that wanted to display the pride flag, but we were told we don't really have a policy, and I just wondered if you can give us any feedback on that?
If I may, through the chair, yes, I have asked facilities and fleet, Tim Holman, to work on that policy and have a draft to me by the end of this month that we'll be able to share and work.
Okay, well, they enthusiastically painted the steps of the courthouse, which I guess didn't turn out too good when they tracked everything inside the courthouse, so.
Yeah, it was rather expensive for us to.
Yeah, so I think that the intentions were good, but we could have avoided that maybe if we had a flag policy. So in addition to garbage, the other thing we hear a lot about as supervisor are roads, and, you know, I get at least two or three constituents a month complaining that they are in a situation where their roads are so potholed that they feel they're doing damage to their vehicles, and in one case, they actually did, or a wheel came off when they hit one at high speed, so I know that these are things that are perennial. And same thing with garbage, we don't seem to be able to get a good handle on this, which, you know, I don't, I know we all have thoughts on this, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I just want to bring it up again, that I hope someday there's a way to solve some of this problem, whether it's going back to gravel in some places and just pave in front of houses on our rural roads, that's the way they do it in Vermont, and look for some kind of solution where we can have safer road conditions. The Ukiah Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency has adopted fees, which will go on the next tax bill if things go according to plan. I would say it's not a perfect system. We're lacking data on wells in Mendocino County, particularly large water users, so there probably will be eventually another change in fees, but the first step is to get the organization working and having assessments, and basically anybody who uses groundwater will have to kick in to cover the cost of assuring that we have a sustainable water supply. So it's not a perfect solution, but it is a solution, and one of the first things that will probably happen is that they will do a good inventory of wells in the Ukiah Valley and get a better understanding of what level they're pumping water from, and it'll, it'll help to improve not only how to properly charge people, but also get a handle on monitoring our water supply beneath Ukiah Valley, which we think is pretty good and we want to keep it that way. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I would just say that I'm going to work with the City of Ukiah Public Works Director, Tim Erickson, and the education team at our haulers across the county to talk about how we can better publicize the work that's being done as it relates to mattress recycling, electronic recycling, Hazmobil's, et cetera. A lot of material can now be accepted at transfer stations, and it sounds like there's just not a lot of awareness on that, so I'm going to work on that. I wanted to just mention a couple of things that are happening in the Ukiah Valley as it relates to services surrounding youth, and First Five is doing not only an incredible job reaching families with children zero to five, but they're also doing positive parenting programs for families that are parenting teens and just youth throughout any age, and I think that the, there are opportunities countywide for First Five to help train other individuals, for instance, at family resource centers throughout the county so that parents are given more opportunities to learn how to better support their youth, to manage, navigate tricky things like social media and substance use and mental health, et cetera. So please let me know or look into First Five for your constituents that are parenting. Also, I took a tour of the Mendocino County Youth Project. They're offering drop-in day center for youth in Ukiah. They're doing outreach in other areas of the county, and we also have the Arbor Day Center that offers a variety of youth activities. And so I think that there are agencies that are sometimes partially funded by the county that are trying to offer youth services, including work that's being done from behavioral health to work with the City of Ukiah as well as the libraries and all of the work that they do throughout the county and to keep our youth engaged, entertained, and having healthy activities. So I really just appreciate all of the organizations that are trying to support our youth in those ways, and wanted to mention that. The Great Redwood Trail Agency approved our 2425 budget, and we've made some strides, especially within the Ukiah Valley, because we have a contractor that's available to do security, and also we've been doing some debatement, and the, in the budget for 2425 includes a project manager to be able to extend those services through. throughout the future Great Redwood Trail line. So if you're in an outlying area and have concerns about weed abatement or security, definitely encourage you to reach out to Elaine Hogan, the Executive Director, and, or myself, to talk about how we can get you better supported in advance of a trail actually moving through. I think that's a great improvement to now have an Executive Director. And to have a project manager is just going to be an additional support to that agency to, to show the community that the trail can be successful. And to that end, since the path has opened in Ukiah, I've been hosting regular events. We do have an event coming up, July 4th. It's called the Patriotic Parade. It is a walk and bike, family-friendly event. It begins at 9:00 AM on Commerce Drive for folks that have not used the trail or for folks that just like to be in parades. They are very welcome to join us at that event. With that, we are going to adjourn to closed session for no less than one hour, which means we will not return before 12:50 to hear items 4J and 4K. Before we go into closed session, I'm going to read the following. "The Board of Supervisors will go into recess and will now convene as the Board of Directors of Air Quality Management District. The Mendocino County Board of Supervisors does not receive any additional compensation or stipend for acting as the Board of Directors for Mendocino Quality, Air Quality Management District." And the Board of Direct.
Excuse me, through, through the chair, Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Counsel. I believe we're handling 6A and 6B first. And then later in the day, towards the end of the meeting, air quality, we'll go into air quality closed session.
Back out and back in.
Yes.
Thank you. Apologize for that. So with that being said. So we will now adjourn to closed session to hear items 6A and 6B. Are there public comments on item 6A or 6B? Seeing no one come forward, seeing no hands raised online, we'll adjourn for items 6A and 6B. Thank you.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma. Ya hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa, los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covel. Está tranquilo, es muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos unir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
¿Dónde nos visité? Porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabi llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia, para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
Cuando me di cuenta de que iba a ser una madre, estaba muy asustada. Después de dos o tres semanas de reuniones en el programa de visitas a casa, estaba totalmente cómoda con el hecho de que iba a tener un bebé. Sí, todavía estaba asustada, pero al mismo tiempo sentía que tenía algún sentido de fuerza detrás de mí.
Si no tuviera esos recursos que Jeanette me proporcionó, creo que sería más difícil ahora.
Al entrar en el programa y me di cuenta, ¡oh, esto es genial! Y ahora mira a mí, trabajo en un centro de recursos de familia con padres y familias, todo eso.
Estoy muy agradecida de que tuviera la oportunidad de conocer a mi visitante a casa porque sin ella, creo que estaría diez pasos atrás de donde estoy ahora.
Pero aquí ya les enseñan un poco más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Pues es algo bien porque cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo fue como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
No sé qué es normal para un bebé de 22 meses o un bebé de 18 meses, ¿sabes? Cuando nos reunimos, normalmente discutimos y obtenemos algún progreso con el bebé. Me hace sentir cómoda y asocio mi parenamiento con ella, mi visitante, diciéndome: "Sí, está bien".
Así que es bueno saber dónde están, en qué etapa están, para cada padre. Y también darle, nuevamente, a tus hijos ese comienzo en educación.
Si tenía preguntas con ella, llamala por teléfono. Sabes, era muy relatable, muy personal. Y, sabes, con ella saber mis hijos, ella pudo ayudarme a guiar a lo largo del camino. Quiero decir, hubo muchas cosas geniales que he aprendido. Fui de una vida muy, tipo, dura. Estaba sin hogar y ella pudo ayudarme a entrar a la escuela. Y en realidad tengo suficientes créditos para graduarme con un título de licenciado en negocios ahora.
Creo que realmente quiero mencionar que estoy agradecido de que aproveché porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
Quiero que otras personas y padres sepan que la visita a casa no es algo que debas temer. En realidad es algo que se necesita.
Ya, porque ella no es solo aquí para ella, ella es aquí para ayudar con todo. Ella me ayudó a crear un espacio seguro donde me sienta cómoda lo suficiente para pedir ayuda.
No tengas miedo de tomar ese paso. Como, no tengas miedo de obtener ayuda. Siempre está bien tener más apoyo.
sugiero, diría, inténtalo. No hay nada que perder. Es gratis, hay algunos beneficios, ya sabes, tienen muchos recursos.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visitas a casa.
Me di cuenta de que mi vida iba a cambiar dramáticamente de maneras que no conocía o entendía o incluso comprendía. Iba a tener que realmente ir al valle y ser responsable y ajustarme a muchas cosas de manera diferente.
Queríamos ser a quien naciera. Ya, sí, ya quiero tener entonces lo que tenemos, aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda. Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
Cuando empezamos el programa, mi hija tenía unos tres meses y mi hija tiene 22 meses ahora. Lo que amo de mi hijo, que está saludable, feliz, sabe que está cuidada y amada. Esas son algunas de las cosas que quería asegurarme que tenía y la tiene.
Estoy feliz hoy con mi hija. Es la mejor cosa de mi vida y estoy contento de despertar y verla. Y todo lo que hago, lo hago por ella.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. Quizás también estar de la forma que yo no la tuve para máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y las reglas, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas lindas también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
Yo era más emocionado y agradecido porque durante tres meses estaba en el país del bebé. Y cuando estás en el mundo del bebé, estás simplemente volando por el pantalón y esperando que seas solo en las maneras en que puedes ser solo.
Pero aquí ya les enseñan un poco más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Pues es algo bien porque cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo fue como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta de que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
Tu sabes, mi experiencia ha sido nada más que positiva. Jeanette ha sido maravillosa, está en el tiempo. Ella me dice si van a haber cambios en el horario.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una buena amiga. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabby nuestra amiga.
Todavía siento que el desafío de ser madre ahora en el mundo de hoy es inmenso. Creo que necesitas apoyo.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra ciudad y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
No tengas miedo de tomar ese paso. Como, no tengas miedo de obtener ayuda. Porque, ya sabes, podrías pensar que sabes lo que estás haciendo, pero siempre está bien tener más apoyo y no lo hagas solo.
Inténtalo. No hay nada que perder. Es gratis. Estoy agradecido de que aproveché porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
¿Están preparados? Somos la Oficina de Servicios de Emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tú y tu familia puedan quedarse seguros durante una emergencia.
Parte de estar preparado es saber sus peligros y tomar precauciones adecuadas. Visita MendoReady.org. En la página de "Saber sus peligros", puedes encontrar peligros para donde trabajas, donde vives y donde sus hijos van a la escuela. En la página de "Plan y Preparación", encontrarás un plan de modelo. Es importante saber lo que vas a hacer, lo que vas a llevar con ti, cómo vas a comunicarte, dónde vas y cómo llegar.
Una gran manera de prepararse es收拾 una bolsa de comprimido. Cada miembro de tu familia debería tener su propia bolsa de comprimido. Visita nuestro sitio web, MendoReady.org, para obtener una lista de cosas que deberían estar en tu bolsa de comprimido.
Lugar y organizar documentos importantes antes de una emergencia es una parte importante de la preparación. Así que visita MendoReady.org hoy, donde puedes encontrar una lista de documentos importantes que deberías tener listos cerca de tu bolsa de comprimido en caso de que debas evacuar.
No todas las emergencias requieren que la gente evacue. Un kit de emergencia tendrá suministros para que te mantengas autodificiente durante 72 horas. Encuentra una lista de suministros para kits de desastre en nuestro sitio web, MendoReady.org.
Una comunidad preparada es una comunidad resiliente que recuperará más rápido de los desastres. Así que toma un poco de tiempo hoy, visita nuestro sitio web, prepárate para que puedas estar preparada.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visitas a casa.
Creo que como padre ahora, estoy agradecido por el apoyo más que yo era antes.
He completado esa forma sin saber qué estaba haciendo. Estoy muy, muy agradecida de que lo hice porque realmente me está ayudando mucho.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta de que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Bueno, fui una nueva madre y no tenía experiencia en cuidar a un bebé.
No hay un libro sobre cómo criar a un niño.
Nuestra familia tiene mucha historia de, ya sabes, drogas, violencia, alcoholismo. Así que no queríamos que nuestra hija experimentara ninguno de eso.
Pensamos que un padre se supone que debe ser amoroso, nutrición, que debe estar allí para su hijo, ya sabes, proveer comida, refugio, alegría. Y entrar, ser, convertirse en padre para ella, no tenía idea de cómo proveer eso.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo y porque nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
Lo que creo que los padres deberían saber sobre la visita a casa es que puedes aprender muchas cosas nuevas y consejos y trucos, cómo cuidar al bebé y qué hacer. Y si estás, ya sabes, atrapado en una rutina y todo siendo monótono, te dan nuevos recursos y nuevas herramientas para manejar la parenzera.
Fue bueno tenerlos guiándome, aunque no fui una primera vez madre, sentí que era una primera vez madre.
Todo me cambió en el tiempo. Tanta información que no tenía idea. Sabes, ella era directa cuando me enseñaba esto y respondía a cualquier pregunta de mi. Fue una experiencia realmente positiva.
Lo que creo que los padres podrían beneficiarse del programa es solo tener alguien aquí para ti, especialmente para los padres de primera vez. Puede ser muy isolante y puede ser muy solo. Y tener al visitante a casa cambia y se siente muy bien.
Para mí, tener a un visitante a casa es como tener una segunda madre allí.
Muchas cosas han cambiado. Definitivamente soy más conocida cuidando a ella. Y sé que cada vez que necesito consejo o ayuda de alguien, simplemente llama a ella.
Es solo ese pequeño acento positivo de, hey, estoy notando algo, ya sabes, busquemos una manera de cambiarlo. Y ella es como, ¿sabes qué, Amanda? Vamos a levantarte, deshacerte y vamos a ver si te gustaría obtener tu licencia de conductor o ver si vas a la universidad, ver si podemos empezar algo para ti.
Es totalmente valioso. Como, incluso si al principio estás en la pared, no te parece que haya un extraño que venga a tu casa y te enseñe sobre tu pequeño, hazlo de todos modos, ya sabes, obtienes la ayuda que necesitas, obtienes consejo profesional sobre cosas que tal vez no sabes sobre tu hijo. El hecho de que el programa no tenga costes o nada, es totalmente gratis, es fantástico.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Sí, pues es algo, un bonito programa porque, pues, es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma. Quedan, que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí y pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visité, porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Wilits y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia de conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
Ella me ha hecho sentir que soy importante y que puedo ir a mi propio ritmo. Y eso es todo lo que necesitas cuando te sientes como que no tienes a nadie.
Fue útil tener alguien allí, tipo, agobiándome y guiándome y dejándome saber que esto es, tipo, lo normal. Se sintió como si me estaba convirtiendo en una nueva madre. Así que fue muy interesante y útil, muy, muy útil.
Sabes, había esa parte autónoma de mí, como, ¿seré aceptada aunque no soy perfecta?
Lo que me gusta más es que ella realmente escucha.
El apoyo que me da es especial porque lo hace con amor y es, es simplemente natural, ya sabes. Eso es todo lo que podría decir. Solo se siente como alguien que he conocido desde que era pequeña.
Sabes, le dije a Jeanette, le dije, Jeanette, supuestamente estás conmigo durante cinco años. Jeanette dijo, sí, lo sé, voy a estar contigo durante cinco años. Eso es cuando dije, bueno, supongo que puedo confiar en ella, ella estará contigo durante cinco años.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Se sintió como si ella también cuidara a Sparrow. Y Sparrow realmente disfrutó. Sí, sabía que cuando Gabby venía, íbamos a hacer algo o aprendiendo algo y ella empezaría inmediatamente a excavar las bolsas de Gabby para averiguar qué actividad íbamos a hacer.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una buena amiga. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabby nuestra amiga.
Creo que la relación que hemos construido ha sido, es solo que ella es parte de la familia.
¿Están preparados? Somos la Oficina de Servicios de Emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tú y tu familia puedan quedarse seguros durante una emergencia. Visita MendoReady.org. Es nuestra tienda de emergencia de una sola vez. Puedes inscribirte en alerts de emergencia, encontrar tu zona de evacuación preestablecida en nuestro mapa de emergencias actual y encontrar información de peligro y preparación.
Imagina que estás enfrentado a un desastre como un incendio y te ordenan evacuar. Supongo que te gustaría haber más tiempo en ese momento. Ahora es tu oportunidad de comprarse ese tiempo. Inscríbete en Nixel y MendoAlerts en nuestro sitio web, MendoReady.org. Hazlo hoy.
Si quieres que tu familia sea tan resiliente como sea posible, es importante tomar un poco de tiempo hoy y visitar MendoReady.org, donde puedes buscar tus zonas de evacuación preestablecidas en nuestro mapa de emergencias actual. También puedes encontrar herramientas importantes para ayudar a mantener tu conciencia situacional, como las cámaras de alerta de incendios de California y las cámaras de condiciones de carretera de Caltrans. Esperamos que tomes un poco de tiempo hoy para prepararte para que tu familia pueda estar preparada. Gracias.
Cuando me di cuenta de que iba a ser una madre, estaba muy asustada. Después de dos o tres semanas de reuniones en el programa de visitas a casa, estaba totalmente cómoda con el hecho de que iba a tener un bebé. Sí, todavía estaba asustada, pero al mismo tiempo sentía que tenía algún sentido de fuerza detrás de mí.
Si no tuviera esos recursos que Jeanette me proporcionó, creo que sería más difícil ahora.
Al entrar en el programa y me di cuenta, ¡oh, esto es genial! Y ahora mira a mí, trabajo en un centro de recursos de familia con padres y familias, todo eso.
Estoy muy agradecida de que tuviera la oportunidad de conocer a mi visitante a casa porque sin ella, creo que estaría diez pasos atrás de donde estoy ahora.
Pero aquí ya les enseñan un poco más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Pues es algo bien porque cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo fue como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
No sé qué es normal para un bebé de 22 meses o un bebé de 18 meses, ¿sabes? Cuando nos reunimos, normalmente discutimos y obtenemos algún progreso con el bebé. Me hace sentir cómoda y asocio mi parenamiento con ella, mi visitante, diciéndome: "Sí, está bien".
Así que es bueno saber dónde están, en qué etapa están, para cada padre. Y también darle, nuevamente, a tus hijos ese comienzo en educación.
Si tenía preguntas con ella, llamala por teléfono. Sabes, era muy relatable, muy personal. Y, sabes, con ella saber mis hijos, ella pudo ayudarme a guiar a lo largo del camino. Quiero decir, hubo muchas cosas geniales que he aprendido. Fui de una vida muy, tipo, dura. Estaba sin hogar y ella pudo ayudarme a entrar a la escuela. Y en realidad tengo suficientes créditos para graduarme con un título de licenciado ahora.
Creo que realmente quiero mencionar que estoy agradecido de que aproveché porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
Quiero que otras personas y padres sepan que la visita a casa no es algo que debas temer. En realidad es algo que se necesita.
Ya, porque ella no es solo aquí para ella, ella es aquí para ayudar con todo. Ella me ayudó a crear un espacio seguro donde me sienta cómoda lo suficiente para pedir ayuda.
No tengas miedo de tomar ese paso. Como, no tengas miedo de obtener ayuda. Siempre está bien tener más apoyo.
Sugiero, diría, inténtalo. No hay nada que perder. Es gratis, hay algunos beneficios, ya sabes, tienen muchos recursos.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visitas a casa.
Me di cuenta de que mi vida iba a cambiar dramáticamente de maneras que no conocía o entendía o incluso comprendía. Iba a tener que realmente ir al valle y ser responsable y ajustarme a muchas cosas de manera diferente.
Queríamos que naciera, ya sí, ya quiero tener, entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
Cuando comenzamos el programa, mi hija tenía unos tres meses y mi hija tiene 22 meses ahora. Algo que amo de mi hijo, que está saludable, feliz, sabe que se cuida y se ama. Esas son algunas de las cosas que quería asegurarme que tenía y la tiene.
Estoy feliz hoy con mi hija. Es la mejor cosa de mi vida y estoy contento de despertar y verla. Todo lo que hago, lo hago por ella.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él, de quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas niños también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
Yo estaba más emocionado y agradecido porque durante tres meses estaba en el país del bebé. Y cuando estás en el mundo del bebé, estás simplemente volando por el pantano y esperando que estés apoyado en las maneras que puedes ser apoyado.
Pero aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
Sabes, mi experiencia ha sido nada más que positiva. Jeanette ha sido maravillosa, está en el tiempo. Ella me dice si van a haber cambios en el horario.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una amiga muy buena. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabby nuestra amiga.
Todavía siento que el desafío de ser padre ahora en el mundo de hoy es inmenso. Creo que necesitas apoyo.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
No tengas miedo de tomar ese paso, como no tengas miedo de obtener ayuda. Porque, sabes, puede que pienses que sabes lo que estás haciendo, pero siempre está bien tener más apoyo y no lo hagas solo.
Intenta. No tienes nada que perder. Es gratis. Estoy grata que aproveche porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
¿Están preparados? Somos la Oficina de Servicios de Emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tu familia y tu familia pueda mantenerse seguras durante una emergencia. Parte de estar preparado es saber tus peligros y tomar precauciones adecuadas. Visita mendo ready.org. En la página de saber tus peligros puedes encontrar peligros para donde trabajas, donde vives y donde tus hijos van a la escuela. En la página de plan y preparar encontrarás un modelo planificado. Es importante saber qué vas a hacer, qué vas a llevar con ti, cómo vas a comunicarte, dónde vas y cómo llegar.
Una gran forma de prepararte es cargar una bolsa de viaje. Cada miembro de tu familia debería tener su propia bolsa de viaje. Visita nuestro sitio web, mendo ready.org, para obtener una lista de cosas que deberían estar en tu bolsa de viaje.
Gentejear y organizar documentos importantes antes de una emergencia es una parte importante de la preparación. Así que visita mendo ready.org hoy donde puedes encontrar una lista de documentos importantes que deberías tener listos cerca de tu bolsa de viaje en caso de que debas evacuar.
No todas las emergencias requieren que la gente evaya. Un kit de emergencia tendrá suministros para que puedas mantenerse autosuficiente durante 72 horas. Encuentra una lista de suministros para kits de desastre en nuestro sitio web, mendo ready.org.
Una comunidad preparada es una comunidad resiliente que recuperará más rápido de desastres. Así que toma un poco de tiempo hoy, visita nuestro sitio web, prepárate para que puedas estar preparada.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visitas a casa.
Creo que como padre ahora, estoy grata por el apoyo más que antes.
Fui a llenar ese formulario sin saber qué estaba haciendo. Estoy muy, muy grata por haberlo hecho porque realmente me está ayudando mucho.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Bueno, era una nueva madre y no tenía experiencia en cuidar a un nacido.
No hay un libro sobre cómo criar a un niño.
Vimos de mucha familia historia de, sabes, drogas, violencia, alcoholismo, así que no queríamos que nuestra hija experimentara nada de eso.
Pensé que un padre se supone que debe ser amoroso, nutrirse, supone que estar allí para su hijo, sabes, proveer comida, refugio, alegría. Y entrar y convertirse en padre para ella, no tenía idea de cómo proveer eso.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá, cómo educar a un hijo y porque pues nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
Lo que creo que los padres deberían saber sobre la visita a casa es que puedes aprender muchas cosas nuevas y consejos y trucos, cómo cuidar al bebé y qué hacer. Y si estás, sabes, atrapado en una rutina y todo siendo monótono, les dan nuevos recursos y nuevas herramientas para manejar la parenthood.
Fue bueno tenerlos guiándome, aunque no era una primera madre, sentí como una primera madre.
Totalmente cambió mi mente con el tiempo. Tanta información que no tenía idea sobre, sabes. Ella era directa cuando me enseñaba esto y respondía a cualquier pregunta. Fue simplemente una experiencia realmente positiva.
Lo que creo que los padres podrían beneficiarse del programa es tener alguien aquí para ti, especialmente para los padres de primera vez. Puede ser muy isolante y puede ser muy solo. Y tener al visitante a casa cambia de actitud y se siente muy bien.
Para mí, tener un visitante a casa es como tener una segunda madre ahí.
Mucho ha cambiado. Definitivamente tengo más conocimiento cuidando a ella. Y sé que cada vez que necesito consejo o ayuda de alguien, puedo llamársela.
Es solo ese pequeño apoyo positivo de, "Hey, estoy notando algo, sabes, busquemos una manera de cambiarlo". Y ella es como, "Sabes, Amanda, vamos a levantarte, te deshaces y vamos a ver si puedes obtener tu licencia de conductor o ver si puedes ir a la universidad, ver si podemos hacer algo para ti".
Totalmente vale. Como incluso si estuvieras en la fachada al principio, no te parece que tener a un extraño que venga a tu casa y te enseñe sobre tu pequeño, hazlo de todos modos, sabes. Obtienes la ayuda que necesitas, obtienes consejo profesional sobre cosas que tal vez no sabes de tu hijo. El hecho de que el programa no tenga costos ni nada, es totalmente gratis, es fantástico.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próximo a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Sí, pues es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás, entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Cobelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde los visite porque ha sido nuestra casa, a veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro, vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia, para poder estar tranquilos, así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos, y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
Ella me hizo sentir como importante y puedo ir a mi propio ritmo. Y eso es todo lo que necesitas cuando te sientes como si no tienes a nadie.
Fue útil tener alguien ahí que me sostenga y me guíe y me dé cuenta de que esto es algo normal. Se sintió como si me estaba volviendo una nueva madre, así que fue muy interesante y útil.
Sabes, había esa parte autónoma de mí, como si me aceptaran aunque no soy perfecta.
Lo que más me gusta es que ella realmente escucha.
El apoyo que me da es especial porque lo hace con amor y es simplemente natural, sabes. Eso es todo lo que podría decir. Sintió como alguien que he conocido desde que era pequeña.
Dije a Jeanette, "Eres supuesta a estar conmigo durante cinco años". Jeanette dijo, "Sí, lo sé, voy a estar contigo durante cinco años". Eso fue cuando dije, "Bueno, supongo que puedo confiar en ella, ella estará contigo durante cinco años".
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Siento que ella también se preocupaba por Sparrow, y Sparrow realmente disfrutó. Sí, sabía que cuando Gabby venía, íbamos a hacer algo o aprender algo y ella empezaría a excavar las maletas de Gabby para averiguar qué actividad íbamos a hacer.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una amiga muy buena. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabby nuestra amiga.
Creo que la relación que hemos construido ha sido que ella es parte de la familia.
¿Están preparados? Somos la Oficina de Servicios de Emergencia y...
We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como, cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía. Pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor telling me, yeah, this is, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent. And also to give, again, your children that head start in, in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know, they got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera. Ya, sí, quiero tener entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda. Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months. And my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her. And everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él, de quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas lindas también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in baby land. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como, cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía. Pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más, más frío por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para, para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you, you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supply.
Okay, reconvening out of closed session. Item 6A and 6B had no reportable action. We are now on item 4J. That is the discussion of possible action including acceptance of presentation from Clifton Larson Allen LLP regarding fiscal year 2022-2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Sponsor is Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector Sarah Pierce.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, CEO, Antle County Council, Curtis. Can we confirm that Rich Gonzalez is in for CLA?
He is.
Okay, perfect. So I am here with CLA, Rich Gonzalez, and Joey Judson, if he is joining, to present the fiscal year 2223 ACFOR. We also have Brett Miller from RGS with us today in case there are questions the board has about their involvement in the process. CLA will be presenting at a very high level and will be speaking on the purpose of the audit, the process, and the summary of the results. Before we begin presenting, I would like to say thank you to all of the departments, especially the Auditor, Controller, and Treasurer Tax Collector's office for an extremely well job, a job well done. The breaking down of silos between departments and the collaboration efforts stands out in the results of this audit. As you'll see later on in the presentation, but I'm very proud to say that there's absolutely no findings this year, which is hard to achieve on a good year, but remarkable this year knowing the multitude of challenges and circumstances we faced and are facing. I'd like to acknowledge RGS for their role they played in the consultation and guidance as well. So once again, thank you to all. Before I turn it over to CLA, I would also, I also want to speak about a few items which were covered during the May 7th meeting we presented during the 2223 Progress Report update that still remains the same and are unchanged. Equity accounts had to be reconciled to the prior year's ACFOR due to previous adjustments not being entered into the financial statement. We were able to successfully tie the equity accounts, which did result in adjustments to various funds. And then regarding the TEATER, uncollected property tax under the TEATER plan have historically been tracked outside of munis. And while the ACFOR called that out previously, it wasn't fully transparent. We are still seeing a $14.2 million, $14.2 million as of June 30th in defaulted taxes and an additional $8.4 million which defaulted July 1st, 2023. Once again, all agencies have been paid their full allotment under the TEATER plan and the county is carrying this amount as a receivable in the Tax Resources Fund. Additionally, the Tax Resources Fund was operating in a deficit cash balance. Therefore, a general fund due to, due from the Tax Resource Fund of $5.5 million was required to be booked. Lastly, there is a requirement to keep 25% of the total delinquent secured taxes in the tax loss reserve. This required an additional $5.4 million to be transferred from the general fund to bring the balance to the minimum requirement. The county has the potential to recoup the defaulted amounts through the property tax, property auction process. The Treasurer Tax Collector's Office is anticipating completing a tax sale in this fiscal year 2425, as discussed before, the last tax sale was in 2019. The power to sell list, which we will certify as of 7/1 on Monday, originally started off with about 266 parcels equalling $2.8 million. As of last Friday, 6/21, the list is down to 215 parcels for a total of $1.7 million. Please note, this does not equate to actual revenue received as some of those might have been placed on payment plans. But the positive note is taxpayers are coming in and addressing the back taxes and penalties and interest. And we are making steps forward. Next thing I'd like to just go over is the carryforward balance for fiscal year 2223. The official amount is $807,227. So it was a little less than what was presented previously. And then lastly, I would just like to state that the data presented in the ACFOR is a little outdated because of the timing of the audit. The data presented today, while it will look like there's an increase in fund balance overall for the, all of the governmental funds, not just general fund. The general fund did not increase because we are still, as of 2324 and 2425, seeing declines in TOT and sales tax. So the increases that you will see in the ACFOR are related to more restricted funds. And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Rich Gonzalez. Rich, are you on?
Hi, Rich. Good afternoon. We're having a little trouble with your audio.
Through the chair, I'm Lillian Beard and deputy clerk, the board. Rich, it appears that whatever microphone or headset you're using is not picking up any audio. We cannot see your box lighting up, therefore it seems to be an audio issue on your side.
Supervisor Williams?
Do you want a question to buy some time?
Or do you have a question?
Yeah, so would it, is there any merit in having a doubtful category where an account's receivable that we don't want to consider current, but we're not ready to write off? We could be a little more transparent with the taxpayers that we have a category that we might be able to collect, we're not ready to call it, but we're also doubtful?
If I may, through the chair. Based on government standards and how things are presented, it's typically not presented as a doubtful account on the balance sheet. It will be shown in the receivable balance. We can see about getting more detailed information, but it's not typically presented that way on. on the financial statement.
Even though we know some of these accounts, we may not be able to collect?
Correct. It's not typically presented, but we can look into it and get you more information.
Looks like we're just waiting for Rich to come back in. A reset. Supervisor Jersey, did you have a question?
Yeah. So this wasn't a question I asked to pipe email, but I know you and your office are in the process of catching up. So for example, this document might have been produced by the office in the past, maybe six months ago or so. So do you have a timeframe for how soon you think the Act for will be finished for the fiscal year not yet ended in June of 2024?
If I may, through the Chair, the intention is that we will go ahead and close somewhere in September for 2324 and have the finalized Act for by December 31st, which is the technical deadline to have these submitted. So we will be back on track, presenting somewhere around quarter one for fiscal year 2425.
Good news. So it's back on, on schedule.
That's, that's the goal.
Thank you, Supervisor Hasek.
It's so just, Sarah, with, with the numbers you presented, you talked about $14 million of uncollected taxes, some number like that. Right? And then you said with the, with the auction, that with the 215 parcels now, that that would generate 1.7 million? Is that above the 14 mil or?
If I may, through the Chair.
Yeah.
So right now, they're, the defaulted taxes total about 22 million. The delinquent taxes, the ones that are, we're putting up for power to sell and will be on the list to auction as of 7/1, equate to having about 1.7 million in penalties and interest and actual taxes be recouped.
Okay, so we just need to sell those properties to somewhere 1.7 or above?
Correct. We would need at least the 1.7 too.
Right.
Yeah, to have those break even. And, you know, people are coming in still this week. We've seen activity. So it's encouraging that there are still people walking in trying to have the properties be put on a payment plan or redeemed so that they don't go power to sell.
Right. And I just got a phone call yesterday about a person who was worried about this. So to be clear with people, that they can come in at any time before it goes to auction to pay off their taxes?
So, so yes, I need to get a little bit more information on that. As of 7/1, they will be listed on a list to be able to sell. Individuals are still able to walk in and redeem those up until, I believe, the date of the auction, but I will get more information and provide it back. The tax auction process is new to all of us working in the Tax Collector's Office. There's a lengthy guide that we're reaching out to other counties that are in the same experience as us to get some guidance. The documentation suggests we work 290 days in advance of the actual auction. So we've got some work to do before we can actually, you know, auction properties off, but we are, you know, taking steps towards that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Jersey.
Yeah. I think it was maybe 2019 was the last time the county had an auction. My recollection is that this, just going through this process of notifying property owners that their property will go to auction, very frequently results in people coming in and coming up with a payment plan to, to pay off the debt. So that, again, my recollection is a very small percentage of, of properties that are scheduled for auction actually ever go to auction because of the incentive that people have to come in and pay it off.
If I may, through the Chair, correct, people have been coming in this entire month trying to redeem, and we are seeing an increase in activities. And we have had staff diligently calling the list to, you know, encourage the taxpayers to come in.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, it does look like you have rejoined and may now have audio.
I hope so. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Thank you for that.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, please continue with your presentation.
Okay, awesome. Well, members of the Board, Management, CEO, citizens, thanks for having me join your meeting today. My name is Rich Gonzalez. I'm a principal with CLA, and I'll be presenting the audit reports for the County Menasino for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And for this meeting, I'll be covering the purpose of the audit. I'll be briefly discussing our audit approach. Then I'll provide a summary of audit results by engagement. I'll also provide a summary of the required audit communications to governance. And then finally, we'll discuss any recent GASB pronouncements that could impact the audit next year. Okay, it's the purpose of our audit is to express opinions, providing reasonable, but not absolute assurance, whether the county's financial statements are free from a true statement, whether due to fraud or error. Another purpose of our audit is to issue a report on internal controls and compliance as required under our standards, the government auditing standards. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is basically a recap of our audit approach. A lot of people think our audit is just a matter of, you know, we just go on, go into the field, do some testing, and we're done. It's actually a very long approach. I could cover the span of six to 12 months easily. If we look at this model here, we basically could, we could basically present our approach in four phases. The first phase is planning, and during this phase, we develop a timeline with the county of when we're going to perform our procedures and issue the report. We also perform a preliminary risk assessment and account analysis, you know, based on our experience with the County Menasino and also our experience with other governments similar to Menasino. Finally, in this stage, we provide a PBC listing using a portal requesting items needed to perform the audit. The second phase is our systems evaluation, and this is when we perform interim field work and we, and we provide, or we perform an understanding of the internal controls of the county. And in some cases, we'll actually test those controls like we would for like payroll disbursements or general disbursements out of the county's general checking account. And at this stage, we design audit programs based on a risk. So again, we don't use a can audit approach. Our procedures are based on where we think there's a misstatement at the county, you know, based on our experience with other counties similar to Menasino. The third stage is our testing and analysis. This is when we receive the trial balance from the county, and we perform a final review of that trial balance. At this stage, we perform our field work, which is basically testing of all the county's significant accounts. And then basically, we're executing our audit plan from the planning and systems evaluation stages. And then finally is our reporting stage. This is our review of deliverables, you know, whether it's a governance communication, the Act for, the single audit, or any other deliverables we issue on behalf of the county. And at this stage, we communicate our findings, the recommendations to management of the county. All right, next slide. So for 2023, this is our summary of audit results by engagement. So as Sarah mentioned earlier, we did not have any findings with the Act for, which is a huge accomplishment for the county, you know, based on our previous experience. And more importantly, we issued an unmodified opinion on the county's financial statements, which is basically a clean opinion. I don't know if we're discussing this report at this meeting, but we also issued a audit of the Transportation Development Act funds. And with this report, we also issued a modified opinion, and we did not have any findings to report. Okay, and then the final deliverable is the county's single audit. And the single audit is basically an audit of the county's federal funding. Down below, you're going to see a recap of the programs that we selected based on a risk assessment. So we tested SNAP, a couple COVID-19 programs, we tested child support enforcement, and then finally, foster care. The threshold used to distinguish between type A and type B is $1.7 million, just to kind of give you perspective. And the county is, was qualified as high risk only because they had material weaknesses in the past, and this required us to test 40% of the programs, which those four programs listed give us that coverage. As far as results, we did issue an unmodified opinion on compliance over the major programs, and we also issued an unmodified opinion on internal controls of our major programs. We did not report any findings with the single audit. Okay, next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, here's a recap of our findings. We did not have any findings reported with, with our audits of the financials and the single audit. I thought it'd be important to show you this slide. This is basically a recap of the findings from last year, and this includes material weaknesses in both the financial statement audit and the single audit. All four of these were corrected during the fiscal year. So without, the county did a really good job correcting these findings in time for the audit. So you definitely deserve some recognition here. And if I briefly go over these findings, you know, the first one, 2022-001, this is kind of a general finding with regard to the closing of several accounts, where last year's audit, there were several reconciliations missing for accounts such as receivables and capital assets and payables. Well, this year, we did not have any findings at all with those year-end reconciliations. Everything tied nicely to the supporting schedules and the support provided by the county. The second finding had to do with external cash accounts maintained by county departments. And this was brought to our attention by the Audit Controller's Office, that there was, there were some accounts being maintained that were not accounted for in Munis or the county's reporting system. So those are all brought into the system prior to the audit, and we, again, we had no exceptions. All those accounts were being reconciled periodically. The third finding had to do with the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This is related to the single audit. We had some significant adjustments in last year's audit. This year, we didn't have any adjustments with the CIFA. And then finally, 2022-004, this finding was related to a major program tested during the single audit. It's specific to the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, where the county did not have support for $253,000 of payroll expenses that were claimed. We did not have any such findings this year with the programs we tested. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so whenever we perform an audit, we're required under our standards to communicate certain matters to governance, which is, you know, you, the Board. So this, the next two slides are a recap of those communications. You should have also received a letter summarizing these items. The first item is accounting policies, and the county's significant accounting policies are described in Note 1 to its Act for or financial statements. For 2022-23, there were no new accounting policies or changes other than the implementation of GASB 96, which were the Sabidas. The second item, accounting estimates, the county had three significant estimates that we're aware of, which is very common for a county. The first one's a claims liability, which is based on third-party actuarial reports. The second significant estimate is a net pension liability and the related deferred inflows and outflows. And those estimates are also based on actuarial reports. And then finally, the solid waste landfill closure and post-closure liability is based on engineering estimates approved by the state. As far as correcting the statements, we did, we did have one corrected the statement, but we didn't see that significant because it's basically just, basically the entries offset to have a net effect of zero on the county's fiduciary fund statements. The next item is the disagreements of management, and we did not have any. After that, we have consultations with other accounts, and we did not have any consultations with other accounts other than any consultations we have with RGS as we're working through the audit. This audit is considered a group audit because we rely on the work performed by MCERIS auditors, and we had no issues with the audit work that they performed from MCERIS, which we do reference in our audit report. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, you'll be happy to know we did not identify any fraud or legal acts during our audit. We did not have any significant difficulties during the audit. You know, again, I want to thank Sarah, Megan, and their team, and also thank RGS for a very smooth audit, you know, despite some of the challenges with the implementation of the new standard. For the RSI, it requires supplementary information. We're just, I'm just going to communicate that we perform limited procedures on that RSI. We don't audit it. We just make sure that the numbers and, and that information ties back to the statements. And when we talk about RSI, we're referring to the management discussion and analysis, which is in your Act for, and also those budgetary schedules and the pension information, which are in the RSI section of the Act for. The county's Act for also includes supplementary information, and these are basically the combining financial statements that are in the Act for that roll up to the front of your report. This also includes the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And for this information, we do, do some work because we, we have to prefer, we have to perform limited procedures to give it in relation to opinion between these schedules and the county's financial statements. And then finally, there's other supplementary information in the county's Act for, and this includes both the statistical section and the transmitter letter and some other schedules such as an org chart. We don't really perform any procedures on those, and we do not give an opinion on that information. And the only thing we do is on the statistical sections, there are some schedules that do tie back to the Act for, so we do check those for clerical accuracy, to make sure those numbers are updated and do agree to the statements. And then finally, management representations. Before we issued a report, management was required to provide a management representation letter that was signed by both the Audit Controller and the CEO. Once we received that, we were able to release our report. Okay, next slide, please. And I'm happy to say that for the first time in three or four years, we did not have any significant GASB pronouncements to implement. It's been a busy three years with the GASBs for the leases, the Sabidas, and the fiduciary funds. There's really not much going on for 2324, so we kind of get a break for once. And that's all I've got. Does anybody have any questions about the audit and the results?
I'm looking towards the Board members for any questions. Thank you for your presentation, Supervisor Hasek.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Sarah Pierce for this audit with no finding. That's really an accomplishment, so thank you.
Thank you. It was a team effort and the departments, like I said, breaking down the silos has helped a lot.
So this has been a long journey, and I know in the beginning Supervisor Williams and I probably didn't get a lot of love for pointing out that it's hard for us to make financial decisions if we don't know what's in our bank account. And, you know, it was an interesting journey, and I remember sitting down with Sophia Savalana from RGS to talk about our problem. This would have been about maybe two or three years ago. And, you know, she, she had been very kindly had a conversation with CEO Antle, and that kind of got the ball rolling. And I, you know, RGS has played really a huge role in, along with all the hard work that's been done by our own team in making this successful, and I just want to recognize them. They, they're a very good group of consultants who, I believe, have really made the difference in getting us to where we are today.
Supervisor Williams?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you and your team. This is the, and, you know, I thought it was going to take us a couple of years to get this in order and hearing that, that we're on schedule this year is a huge accomplishment.
Thank you.
Please, please pass it along to the whole team. I know it's a team effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward in the room and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, I'd like to bring it back to the Board for a key of emotion. Supervisor Hasek?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Thank you. Vote by the button, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the team for all the work that they've done to get us caught up. We are going to move on to item 4K, discussion of possible action, including direction to staff regarding waiver violation penalty fees for building permits and any required discretionary permits for the Fort Bragg Rural Fire Protection District fire training apparatus structure. Supervisor Williams?
Sure. So you might recall, this Board decided when we were dividing up the PG&E funds to fund a couple of fire tower training props. And this is because getting firefighters through firefighter one is very difficult if you don't have the right apparatus. It's also hard to teach people how to do ventilations when they're doing it on a roof prop without live fire. So we funded it, but we partnered with multiple fire districts to carry out the work. And in this case, it was Fort Bragg Fire- Fire that stepped forward. They, not only did they assemble, have the tower assembled, but they also found a partner to provide land. It's very difficult to find industrial land on the coast. And I witnessed what a struggle it was to find a location to house this tower. And they got, they got a landowner who was willing to do it just out of generosity. They're not asking for anything. But then we got notified that code enforcement had flagged it as a code violation. Code enforcement is probably right. I think our staff is following the book. They came to the right conclusion. But it's not what the board intended when we funded the project. This was a county project. We asked Fort Bragg to help. They found a generous landowner. We didn't mean to incur, you know, fines in the order of $8,000. I'm going to show you a photo of the tower in Fort Bragg so that we all have an understanding of what we're talking about. The first presentation we had to the board, I had run the idea by the Cal Fire Unit Chief, and he said, you don't need permits. We have one in Napa. That may be the case for the state. They may be operating under a different set of rules. Maybe they don't need permits, or maybe the particular apparatus they put together didn't. Or maybe their different county interprets the rules differently. But I want to highlight it that in good faith, all participants believed this was not something that needed to go through a planning and permitting process. I think there was a belief that it was simply training apparatus, just like you might have a car prop to learn how to put out a car fire. This is a prop to learn how to rappel off the building, do a ventilation, forcible entry and so forth. Wasn't intended to be a permanent structure. Supervisor Jordy, would you like to add?
Yeah, so I think, just a little backup. So Supervisor Williams and I met with planning staff, and we were trying to brainstorm on how to address this issue. Initially, Supervisor Williams and I came up with the idea that maybe, maybe it would be best to have a broad county policy that says when the county funds a project, the project still will require to get any building or planning permits that they're required to get. But if they're, if they did get the permit after the fact, because of misinterpretation or misunderstanding, they just wouldn't pay the penalty, a penalty fee on top of the regular permit fee. So that was the original approach that we had. And then in discussing this with planning staff and county council's office, it looks like that, it could be very challenging to kind of craft that perfect ordinance or policy. So it was based on staff recommendation that we kind of recalibrate this agenda item to really just sort of address the specifics of this request. And the request isn't that it's exempted from any permits that it's required to get. If it's required to get permits, it'll get the permits. It's just to exempt it from the penalty fee that it's, that the district is being told they're going to need to get paid. So, so that's kind of how we got to this agenda item. And again, I think it, I, well, we hear from the fire department, but my understanding is that there was a misunderstanding that they did not believe they needed to get the permits. You know, nobody asked me, but if, my opinion, I probably would have said it does. To me, it looks like a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, you know, there's live fire, et cetera. To me, I would have said, hey, you know, I think this is going to require building and planning review. But, and I think that is what, what I understand the planning department's determined. But I think our request here is that the board consider waiving the penalty. So they would, they would still go through the process, get the permits. They just wouldn't pay for penalties. And so that, that's really the request that's before the board today. But it's, it's, it's been structured for a fairly wide open discussion for the, based on input we have from planning and county council.
Thank you. Assistant, did you have a question or objection before I go back to Supervisor Williams?
Yeah.
I'm muted now. Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council. I just wanted to clarify that the item here would be for directing staff to bring back the, any waiver of any kind on the fees, because right at this moment, we don't have before the board the actual permit fees and amounts and what, where it's coming from. It would be more direction to bring it back. But that was the only clarification I wanted to make for today.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, Supervisor Jordy and I took a very narrow look just at the Fort Bragg project. And part of this is Brown Act. We didn't want to consider anything other than where we have a common interest. But other supervisors may know of similar projects throughout the county that should be included in whatever direction is given to staff today.
Okay, Supervisor McGordy and then Hashak?
That's exactly right. We also have a problem in Hopland with their, their fire training facility of, it might be slightly different, but I would, again, given the limited resources that our volunteer fire departments have, I, I, it would be great if we can work with them to get them compliant without finding them to the, taking away valuable money, given the fact that they provide an extraordinary community service, especially Hopland. Hopland is so busy, so many accidents in Highway 101. They get called at all hours of the day. No one says, gee, I don't think I can make it. They're there. And we need to somehow respond in a positive way to keep them encouraged so that they want to do things and train their guys, work with us, and be the best that they can be. So I hope that we can take a look at their issues as well in this process.
Supervisor Hashak?
Well, looking at that picture of the structure, it certainly seems like that would be something that would need a permit and everything. And, and so, you know, I think that when we dispersed the PG&E money, it was, I forget how much it was for the training structures, maybe a million dollars. Was it a million? So, so have we used up all that million for this? Because, you know, and we don't have amounts here. But, you know, what I've heard is like, is 5,000 for the permit, and then penalty would be another 10,000. That's what I heard from planning and building. But just trying to see if we have any extra money in that line item.
CEO Antle?
Yeah, I'm looking back at, thank you, Chair. I'm looking back at Sarah Pierce. She'll confirm, but I believe we used the majority of that 1 million for various different structures, not just the Fort Bragg.
Good afternoon, Board. Sarah Pierce, Acting Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. Yes, there was a million dollars allocated for two larger structures, one in the city of Ukiah, one for Fort Bragg, and I believe three smaller structures throughout the county, and all of the funds have been utilized.
Okay, thank you for that. Supervisor Jordy?
I was just going to add, my recollection is that the proposal, at the time, we thought it was only going to fund two projects. And I think the fire departments worked among, between themselves, and came with an idea to get more training centers throughout the county. So they, they actually, they could confirm it, but I suspect that they added their own funds to get all five structures placed, not just the two.
Okay. I'm wondering if the department would like to come forward with any comments? I see Director Krog coming, and then I'll call on the public, and then I'll call on the public for public comment.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Julia Krog, Planning and Building Services Director. So I did have correspondence with the sponsoring supervisors on this item, and planning and building has no objection if the board would like to waive the violation or penalty fees. My only comment is obviously typically that those fees are for offsetting the expense of the department for having conducted the code enforcement investigation component. So just understanding that it will mean that there's a little bit less cost recovery within our code enforcement division, but that is entirely up to the board how you would like to handle those fees. And we can certainly work with, if the board does do the recommended action, we'll work with county council's office on a resolution addressing the formal waiver of fees.
Okay. I suspect that there may be an amended motion, and I'll wait to hear from that. I'd like to now open the floor to public comment unless Assistant Counsel Scott, do you have another question or comment? No? Okay, thank you. Okay. Now is a great time for public comment on this item. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Steve Orsi, Fire Chief of Fort Bragg. And I just got a few things to bring up. I don't want to take a lot of your time. First, thank you for considering this. That's really important to us. I really, as, as probably the oldest chief in the county, I don't know about oldest, but I've been there the longest for sure. I wanted to take a minute and thank you guys for, for the support that you've been giving us the last few years. Because, as I said, I've been doing this for 23 and a half years. And when I first started, I remember coming, coming here begging for money. And we got a lot of support, but no financial support. The county's always appreciated what the volunteer services that we put out, but they just never found, they never found a way to help us out financially. And I seen that changing, and, you know, I want to thank you guys for that. So very much appreciate it. The PG&E fund, that was a, that was an unexpected gift, I guess you'd call it. And, and doing the towers, that wasn't my idea, but I thought it was a good one. I wish I would have came up with it myself, but I didn't. It really does provide excellent training for our volunteers. Wanted to bring up a sample from, from my department. We have, we have quite a few new people in our department. On Monday night, we, we did a classroom training on ventilation, like you was talking about, ventilation of a structure fire. And we could sit in a classroom, and we could watch videos, and we could explain to all these new kids what happens during a fire, when you, when you, when you put a hole in the roof and you direct the fire out and all that. And, I mean, they get it, I guess, but it's just not the same as seeing it. So that Monday night, we did a couple hour classroom portion. And then Thursday night, we were able to go out to the tower, light the room on fire, put them in there and see, and let them see firsthand exactly what that fire does when you vent it. And that's going to, that's going to stick with them forever. So that kind of training is just, I mean, it's priceless. So again, you know, thank you for all that. And we do understand, we weren't trying to get away with anything. I mean, we weren't, I get it, you know, that by looking at the tower now, you're thinking, oh, it was obvious you needed a permit. But at the time, we really were under the impression that we didn't. One was because it was a training thing. Second was because it was, it's considered a temporary structure, because the agreement we made with the forest company out there is we can put it on their property, but within one year, if they decided we have to go, we had one year to get it out. And we signed that agreement with them. So we knew that, you know, that could be, it could be this year, next year, whenever. So under them, that, our impression was, we don't have to get a permit because of that. We were wrong. And we, and we found out. And so it wasn't, definitely wasn't intentional. And so basically, I'd like the supervisor to consider waiving violations. We're fully aware that we need permits. We're working on them right now. There's a lot, there's a lot to getting a permit. And I've been working with the, the county on making sure that they're aware of every step we're taking. And we're not trying to put them off. We're, we're making progress on that as of, even today. Again, I'd like to consider ours and Hopland's tower as well, because they're in the same boat as we are. They didn't think they needed a permit, and all of a sudden now they got, you know, triple the cost of it. So that means, I think that's all I got to bring up. And I appreciate you guys considering that.
Thank you for coming today, Chief. Are there any board members that have questions for Chief Orsi? Not seeing any questions for you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public in the room that would like to come forward?
Hello, Mitch Franklin, Chief of Hopland Fire. Steve said it very well. Thank you guys for everything you've done for us. The training towers have been amazing. I know their original idea was to have the, the two main towers inland, Ukiah, one on the coast. With the, with the million total, we figured we could get the best pain for a buck by adding three satellite towers. Under our impression, non-permanent, portable, non-permanent structures. When we assembled them, had them assembled, planning and building completely disagree with them not being permanent structures. Company that erected the structure, not permanent structures. They're floating on concrete slab, not anchored to the concrete.
I'm sorry, could you just get a little bit closer to the microphone? Your audio's going in and out.
They're not bolted to the concrete. They're floating. It's not a permanent structure. And that, that's our issue right now. Their county planning and building wants us to go back to manufacturing, pretty much redesign this whole thing and come up with some hold downs. We're talking over $100,000. We've already gone through the engineering process because it's in the floodway. There's no impact. We've provided the flood report. This, we're, we're hoping for your consideration to waive all this and let us continue to have the towers up and utilize them. They provide an amazing benefit to all our volunteers, not just Hopland, the entire county. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I'm not seeing anyone else come forward in the room. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine. And seeing no hands, I'd like to bring this back to the board and invite somebody to make a motion. Supervisor Jordy?
Yeah. Again, just, I think if you look at the California Environmental Quality Act, you're talking about live fire. It's, it's, that's, that's an activity that has the potential to impact the environment. By definition, it's a project. Projects typically trigger planning review and, and possibly building permits. I'm not an expert in the building code as to whether or not it requires building code, building permit. I'm going to rely on the planning and building department's determination on that and maybe county council. So the proposal from Supervisor Williams and myself is to not exempt these projects from any building or planning permits that they may be required to get, but simply exempt them from any fines and code enforcement recovery costs. So I now understand there is a similar situation in Hopland, and so I would be happy to make a motion to exempt both the Fort Bragg and the Hopland projects from any fines or cost recovery related to code enforcement, but not exempt them from any planning or billing permits deemed applicable by the planning and building department.
Thank you. And thank you, Supervisor Williams. Second, and just for the record, this is direction to bring this back.
So just for clarity, it's the recommended action, adding and Hopland fire training apparatus structure.
Okay. The clerk have all of that? Oh, Supervisor McGordy, apologies.
So there still is an issue about the engineering. I'm trying to understand why planning and building would second guess the manufacturer on what they think is adequate. Where would they get that expertise and reach that conclusion? And it sounds very significant based on what we're hearing.
So I believe that is a question for the Director of Planning and Building as it relates to the Hopland training structure.
Thank you for that question. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to answer it on the fly here. I'd likely want to talk with our building inspectors that may have reviewed the permit and then issued that correction letter as well. Hopland's tower is different from the Fort Bragg Tower in that it is located in a flood plain or floodway. And so there is obviously additional anchoring requirements that may be necessary when you're located in an area where you could be subject to floodwaters. So I'm curious if it may relate to that, or it could be another California building code-related requirement that I'm just not aware of off the top of my head. So.
Having seen the structure many times, it's on the periphery. It's not like it's mid-channel. So I would guess that most of the time when there is water in that channel, that you're kind of in a backwater. You're not really in a really fast-moving car. Just be really curious to know how this is.
Sure. And I'll just say the floodplain areas, the mapped FEMA areas, there's really not a lot of discretion that's able to be exercised by the county in regards to that. Really, we have to ensure that any structure is located within a mapped area by FEMA is compliant with all of the FEMA requirements in terms of anchoring and elevation requirements.
It looks like Chief has a comment on this.
Well, I don't, I don't want to get into too much of a back and forth here, Supervisor McGordy. So actually, what I have on my mind, Chief, if you don't mind, is that, and, and I'm assuming that you all have met with planning and building staff to try to kind of work out some type of opportunity to mitigate this. I mean, one of the ideas I have just off the top of my head is that it is potentially not there during flood season. I'm not sure if that's allowed or not.
We provided the county planning and building with an elevation cert. We, we had an engineer come out and provide a cert saying that it will not be, and provide that to county planning and building. But they, so they still want a system with the manufacturing saying they have never provided an anchor system for one of these towers. And they've sold over $100.
Okay. Well, I think that when the item comes back for consideration, thank you for that, when the item comes back for consideration of planning and building can bring more information regarding Hopland and the flood plain or way. Absolutely. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I was going to ask, could we, could we have counsel, before it comes back, double check to see what discretion the board may have? I know staff doesn't have authority. They have to follow.
They have to follow what's in the book. But can we see if the Board of Supervisors has any authority to override and decide to maybe deprioritize enforcement on the structure? The balancing here for this board is, if we allow all the rules to prevent the ability to train firefighters, then when we have emergencies, we don't have adequate firefighters to respond. Right? So, we're looking both through the what's right from a building code perspective, but what's also right from a public safety perspective. And we want to be careful that we don't let the building code negate the public safety win. Is that something that council could look at and advise the board when it comes back?
Charlotte Scott, Assistant County Council. So, for today, we're talking just about the potential waiver of fees, or reduction of fees and penalties. If you are wanting county council to look into more broadly, something further, I think we'd have to work on that with planning and building. But that is something we need to look at. I think that what I was hearing from the board today was not direction to exempt from permits, but to focus more on any of the fees that may be required, or penalties that may be required after the fact.
Okay. So we do have a motion, and I'd like to call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that. Unfortunately, I had stated this incorrectly previously, but we will now go to item 7A. So now, the Board of Supervisors will go into recess and will now convene as the Board of Directors of the Air Quality Management District. The Mendocino County Board of Supervisors does not receive any additional compensation or stipend for acting as the Board of Directors of the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on item 7A in the room? I'm seeing no one, and on Zoom, I have no one. So we will now adjourn to close session. We will return no sooner than 2:10.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today, where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared, so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that, as a parent now, I'm grateful for support, more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it, because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom, and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from, like, a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So, we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
Como pensar educarla, uh-huh. Como educar a un hijo y porque nosotros nunca, es la primera vez que íbamos a hacer padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby, and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like, they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom. I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff, and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating, and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license, or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. And the fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa, porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa, porque pues es buena persona la señora, y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. En nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres, y más aún si están en nuestra situación, que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional y como anímicamente, y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa, que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa, los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí. Y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelos. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom, o una llamada telefónica, o por texto.
¿Dónde nos visité? Porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's, y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, como hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana, o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ellas lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí, personalmente, también me ayudó mucho a obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia, para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro ocasión fundamental en el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces, está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important, and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there, kind of holding my hand and guiding me, and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom. So it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me, like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love, and it's just natural, you know? That's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years. Jeanette said, yeah, I know, I'm going to be with you guys for five years. That's when I said, well, I guess I can trust her, she's going to be with you for five years.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita, o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy, como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow, too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were going to be making something, or learning something, and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were going to do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services, and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire, and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org, where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness, such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare, so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program, and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all the stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor, because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero puse aquí, pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía, como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla, y pues, es algo bien, porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo, como consejos, y pues, muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby, or an 18-month-old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable, and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor... my home visitor telling me, yeah, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very, like, rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I think I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her. She's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know. They've got great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the Home Visiting Program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was gonna have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera. Ya, ah, sí, ya quiero tener entonces ahorita lo que tenemos, aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda. Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy, she knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar. En cosas raras también, no solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more of a elated and thankful because for three months, I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo, como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful, she's on time. She lets me know if there's gonna be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're gonna do, what you're gonna take with you, how you're gonna communicate, where you're gonna go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the Home Visiting Programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá. Cómo educar a un hijo y porque pues nosotros nunca... Es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood. It was nice to have them kind of guiding me. Even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes death, and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college. See if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como...
The Board of Directors of the Air Quality Management District is reporting out of closed session on Item 7A with no reportable action. The directors will not recess as the Meniscino County Air Quality Management District and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. The meeting is adjourned.